We're live.
Good evening and welcome. We are going to begin this evening's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I am going to ask my colleagues if they could please unmute themselves and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic, or which is stand. One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Because this is a remote meeting, I am going to ask Ms. Sullivan, if she can please call the role.
Dr. Coleman?
Present.
Mr. DeRougeau?
Present.
Dr. Rivera?
Here.
Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neill? Ms. Oliver Davila?
Present.
Thank you. All members are present with the exception of Mr. Tran and Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Tonight's meeting is being shared live on Zoom, and it will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. For those of you joining us on Zoom or at a later date, you can find tonight's meeting documents posted on the committee's webpage, under the March 24th meeting link. The agenda, presentations, and equity impact statements have been translated in all of the major DPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Verdeano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American sign language. After the interpreters finish introducing themselves, we will be activating the interpretation icon, the globe, at the bottom of your screen. Click the icon to select your language preference. And I would ask ahead of time if everyone can speak slower so that our interpreters are able to interpret what we are saying. Our Spanish interpreters this evening are Juan Bernal and Randolph Dominguez. If you could please introduce yourselves and invite our Spanish-speaking audience to switch over to the Zoom channel in Spanish.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Juan Bernal. I am one of the simultaneous Spanish interpreters assigned for this meeting today. I will now proceed to explain how to access the interpretation feature in Spanish. Muy buenas noches para todos. Mi nombre es Juan Bernal. Soy uno de los interpretes simultáneos asignados a la reunión de hoy. Vamos a estar alternando con mi colega Randolph Dominguez cada treinta minutos para propósitos de la interpretación simultánea. Para que ustedes puedan accesar la interpretación en español, busquen el globo que aparece en la parte baja de la pantalla. Tienen que apretar el globo, hacer un clic, y van a seleccionar español para que puedan escuchar nuestra interpretación en español. Aquellas personas que estén accesando la reunión de un teléfono celular tienen que buscar los tres puntos que aparecen en la parte superior derecha de la pantalla del teléfono y seleccionar interpretación de lenguaje seleccionada en español. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of Boston Public Schools Committee. My name is Randolph Dominguez, and I'm going to be one of your simultaneous interpreters tonight. Muy buenas noches, damas y caballeros. Mi nombre es Randolph Dominguez. Voy a ser uno de los interpretes simultáneos junto con mi colega Juan Bernal, el cual ya le explicó cómo accesar el sistema. También vamos a, como le indicó él, vamos a estar alternándonos. Así que espero que disfruten la reunión. Buenas noches.
Thank you. Our Haitian Creole interpreters this evening are Sergio and Adedji. If you could please introduce yourself and provide Zoom instructions in Haitian Creole.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, distinguished guests. My name is Nadez Sali. Bonsoir. I'm Nadez Sali. I'm an interpreter in Hong Kong. If you need questions, don't hesitate to ask questions and then press the button that says Creole. So if you have any questions, you can type them in the chat box. I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. It's my pleasure to speak with you. Thank you.
Merci. Is Sergio with us? We'll move on to have our Cabo Verdeano interpreters, Liliana and Josiane. If you could please introduce yourselves and provide Zoom instructions in Cabo Verdeano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Josiane, Cape Verdean interpreter. Good evening. My name is Josiane. I'm an interpreter together with Liliana. We change every thirty minutes. To access simultaneous interpretation, click on the globe on the lower part of the screen and select Cabo Verdeano. If you need a phone, click on the three points on the upper right side of the screen. Thank you.
Liliana, you're on mute.
Sorry. Thank you for that. Good afternoon. My name is Liliana, and I will be a Cape Verdean Creole interpreter this evening. I'm starting to say Creole in the first place. I'm trying to change every thirty minutes. And also, on the language on the left side of the screen, on the language of preference, on Creole, you click there. This way you can hear simultaneous interpretation. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I would like to introduce our Cantonese interpreters, Anna and Maple. If you could please introduce yourselves and provide Zoom instructions in Cantonese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, everyone. I'm Anna. I'll be a Cantonese interpreter for the evening tonight. I'm Anna. I'll be a Cantonese interpreter for the evening tonight. If you want to hear Cantonese, you can click on the Earth icon. If you want to hear Cantonese, you can click on the Earth icon. If you don't see the Earth图标, or if you need a new service, you can use the Zoom website to get the latest version. Thank you. Go ahead, Maple.
Hello.
Hi. Thank you, everyone. My name is Maple. I'm one of the Cantonese interpreters tonight. Good evening. I'm Anna. I'll be a Cantonese interpreter for the evening. Then you'll see on the bottom of the screen the Earth图标. After you go in, you'll select Cantonese. You can enter the Cantonese channel. If you use your phone or your computer online, you need to find the three dots on the bottom of the screen that say more. After you go in, you'll find the service. You'll select Cantonese. If you can't see this, you need to go to the Zoom website and download the latest version. Thank you.
You're on mute.
I'm sorry. Pressed it, but it didn't work. Thank you so much. Our Mandarin interpreters are Tina and Wei. If you could please introduce yourselves and provide Zoom instructions in Mandarin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Tina Wang. I'm the Mandarin interpreter for tonight. Welcome. I'm your普通话同声传译. I'm Wang Ting. Tina. Today is with my partner Li Wei to provide you with a普通话的口译服务. Then we'll change it for half an hour. You'll see on the bottom of the screen the Earth图标 with the letter "翻译". If you need it, you can choose普通话. We also have Cantonese translation. Good, see you later. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm one of your Mandarin interpreters today. My name is Wei Li. Hello, I'm your普通话翻译. Just like Tina just introduced, we'll rotate for half an hour to translate. If you need our service, if you use your computer, you'll see the Earth图标 at the bottom. You'll click the Earth图标, and then you'll see the Cantonese option. You can hear our translation. If you use your phone or your computer, you'll see the Cantonese option. You'll see the Cantonese option, and you can hear our translation. Thank you.
Hello. Hello.
Our Vietnamese interpreters are Vi and Du Yan. If you could please introduce yourselves and provide instructions in Vietnamese for Zoom.
Good evening. Let's talk first. Can you do that? Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Vi. I will be your Vietnamese interpreter for tonight and with Du Yan being my partner. Hello, dear. Hello, dear. My name is Vi. I'm a translator with my friend Du Yan. Today, I'm a translator to help you understand. Dear, please press the down arrow to find the Vietnamese word. Press it. You need to have the Zoom button to hear the translator speak. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Du Yan. I'm a Vietnamese interpreter for tonight's meeting. My name is Du Yan. I'm a translator for today. Please press the down arrow to find the Vietnamese word. We'll help you translate.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to ask our ASL interpreters, if you could please introduce yourselves, Simon, Cynthia, and Michael.
Simon's saying hi. I'm a sign language interpreter, Simon. I'm one of the three interpreters. And Michael, I'm one of the other interpreters. And that's Cindy.
Michael is now explaining that deaf people can pin us if that makes it easier for them, and we'll be letting them know whether or not we're switching.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, Sergio. We can hear you if you would like to go ahead.
Yes.
That's okay. Go ahead. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, this is my name is Sergio Setilla, Haitian Creole interpreter. You should permit me to say, I'm here with Nadez, the interpreter. And all this, we need to tell you. Don't hesitate to tell us. And we've done everything we can to help you understand. And we started, we finished in the second quarter, forty-five. And then we already started to continue until the end. And we're glad that we had you today. We clicked on the globe to stop the conversation. Don't hesitate. And we're very glad you had us today. And we wish you good luck. Thank you.
Merci. Thank you to all of you for assisting us this evening. We will now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. And I just want to remind everyone again, if you could please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. I learned something new this evening from one of the interpreters, that when we read, when we're reading, we speak three times faster than we would normally speak. That's pretty fast. So if everybody could please, if you love this monotone voice, just follow, follow being monotone and slow. So thank you, everyone who signed up for public comment this evening. The signup for both public comment periods closed today at four thirty PM. Please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that the committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. I just want to start out this evening by congratulating Kim Janey, who was sworn in today as acting mayor of Boston. She makes history as the first black mayor and black woman to hold the office. Mayor Janey is the District Seven Boston City Councilor and a sixth-generation Roxbury resident. In her former role as Massachusetts Advocates for Children, also known as MAC, Mayor Janey was a regular fixture at school committee meetings, often staying late into the night to take notes and testify alongside her colleague, John Mudd. While at MAC, Mayor Janey championed systemic policy reforms to increase equity, excellence, access, and opportunity in Boston Public Schools. She placed a special focus on eliminating opportunity and achievement gaps for children of color, immigrant children, students who are learning English, children with special needs, and those living in poverty. The committee looks forward to partnering with Mayor Janey as we work together to move our district forward. And on a side note, Mayor Janey was one of the first people to call me and ask me to apply to become an appointed member. So thank you, Mayor Janey, for your faith in me and in so many others from the community who you have mentored and inspired. I also would like to congratulate our own mayor, Marty Walsh, on his appointment as the new Secretary of Labor. We are so proud of you. We're proud to have you represent us, and we look forward to our continued work with you in your new role. And we wish you the best of luck, and we thank you for all that you have done for Boston, and we know that you are taking Boston with you wherever you go. Before we move into the business of tonight's meeting, I just want to say a few words about the recent gun violence in our country. Just days after the horrific murder of eight people in Atlanta, including six women of Asian descent, a gunman in Boulder, Colorado took the lives of ten people in a crowded supermarket. As a mom and as someone who works with young people, it pains me that mass shootings have become normalized in our country. There's nothing normal about mass murder. There's nothing normal about going on about your day and doing errands and worrying that you or your loved ones might not come home safely. And yet, that is our current reality as Americans. It's a reality we must work together to change. I'm heartened that our new president Biden is calling for bipartisan support to pass common sense gun legislation. And I'm hopeful that after years of divisive rhetoric and a life-changing pandemic, we can find common ground on this issue and work together to create a safer country for all of our children. So if you could please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of the victims of these senseless shootings. Thank you so much. We are now going to move on to the approval of our minutes from the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one Fiscal Year Twenty-Two Budget Hearing and Meeting. And at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the role?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRougeau?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neill?
Yes. Excuse me. Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We're now going to move our meeting and cover the superintendent's report. And now I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Brenda Casellius.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, school committee members and everyone joining us on the Zoom cast. It's been quite an eventful week for the city of Boston. It's been a week for the history-making, and it's been just so much going on. So I'm going to try to be brief since it's only been about a week since our last meeting. But I'm going to start with some really fantastic news. First, you may have read in the Globe that last week, the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, otherwise known as DESI, released our 2020 graduation rates. And we are so proud to announce tonight that BPS is celebrating its highest four-year graduation rate on record, seventy-four point four percent. That's two point two percent overall. I am first and foremost so proud of our amazing students, the class of 2020, who last spring, you know, could have given up on us, and they lost their proms, and they lost their graduations in person, and, boy, they overcame so many obstacles. But the district, despite of that, saw increases in our four-year graduation rates for multiple student groups, including increases between two and three percentage points for our Black and Latinx and white students. Later this evening, members of my team will share additional updates on the career in college ready and life readiness schools that you all have as a school committee, and we'll dive further into this data so that you can see exactly what our team did in order to buoy up our 2020 class. We're doing a lot of those similar follow-ups this year with our students to ensure that they too are able to succeed. It has been a rougher year, I think, in many ways for the 2021 class. And I want to acknowledge our students who have just been doing everything possible with this whole year of being disrupted from their learning. We're excited that they will be joining us next week as we finish our reopening plan to hybrid learning in the next several weeks for our high school students. I want to also congratulate Madam Chair, Mayor, our former mayor, Marty Walsh, who was confirmed as Secretary of Labor by the U.S. Senate. I just want to take a few minutes to acknowledge all of the support that he's been given to, that he's given to us. I was able to join other members of the cabinet for a press conference at Fennel Hall following the Senate's vote and before he resigned as mayor on Monday night. I worked closely with former Mayor Walsh since I came to Boston. As you know, he appointed me, and I'm just so grateful for his incredible leadership, his trust in my leadership, and getting my back and his friendship. I said when I came to Boston that, you know, one of the real reasons I came was because of mayoral control and because of the close collaboration with the mayor and the entire cabinet. And, boy, this year really showed why that's so important, you know, to be able to work across the cabinet with city departments. Just amplified the incredible effort that we've been able to do, whether it's food, or operations, or facilities, or getting housing for our students, jobs for our families. This was just an all-hands-on-deck address to the public, and it was because of the mayor's leadership that we were able to forge ahead. And these couple of, these, you know, short two years that I've been able to work with Secretary Walsh now, it sounds funny saying that. I'm so, just so proud of him and appreciative of the investments that he's been able to make, both in BPS and the city and our young people. You know, he's gonna, I think we're going to continue to benefit from his leadership because of that $100 million commitment that he gave last year. And so we have two more years of this budget. You know, you'll vote on the second year of that commitment tonight, and that's just a testament to his commitment to our students and to the families we serve. I know that Secretary Walsh's dedication to Boston youth all across the city, which include, you know, the Dearborn STEM Academy, the New Boston Arts Academy complex that's going to open next year, the Carter School and Quincy Schools, which have started design renovations at a number of other schools, the BPS playgrounds that we've been doing, so much that he's done to be able to support our schools. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank him from all of us for everything that he did for our schools. With the recognition of Secretary Walsh, we get the opportunity to welcome in a new mayor, Mayor Kim Janey. It was incredible to watch Mayor Janey swearing in ceremony earlier today, a truly historic moment. And as a black woman myself, and having broke the glass ceiling, as the first African-American Women Commissioner of Education in Minnesota, I stood proud watching Mayor Janey take her place in history as the first woman and first person of color to serve as the mayor of the city of Boston. This is a tremendous moment in history, and I'm so happy for her and proud of my Roxbury neighbor, a former Boston Public School student. I've met with Mayor Janey several times over the past two years and in the, in the last few weeks around transition planning. Mayor Janey spoke today about her passion for education, her mission to provide equitable access and a quality education to every single BPS student. We share that goal with her, and we're going to work together to bridge the opportunity and achievement gaps that have persisted for far too long in our city. I'm excited to forge ahead on this new chapter for the city of Boston, and I'm ready and so thankful for Mayor Janey's vision of a more equitable city and the leadership she will bring to that vision. It was wonderful to visit the Edwards Middle School with Mayor Janey and Vice Chair O'Neill yesterday. We met with students, and we're happy to observe a class that was learning about busing and desegregation of Boston schools in the 1970s. It's a painful history that Mayor Janey lived through and spoke to the students about. It's not every day that you get an opportunity to hear directly from those who lived it. I'm excited to visit additional schools with Mayor Janey, visit our school leaders and all our teachers who are doing incredible work, and then roll up our sleeves and get busy at this work of creating more equitable opportunities for our kids. I just want to note, as we're uplifting, as we were updating our letterhead yesterday, I couldn't help but notice that it now displays the names of three women of color, Alex Oliver Davila, Brenda Casellius, and Kim Janey, history-making in BPS, too. What a wonderful way to mark Women's History Month. I want to congratulate Mayor Janey. And finally, let me give you some updates on reopening. On Monday, BPS submitted our plan to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to begin providing five days a week of in-person learning for all students in grades K zero to eight, starting on Monday, April twenty-six. The state previously mandated that districts begin implementing five days of in-person learning for grades K zero to five on April fifth and for grades six, eight on April twenty-seventh. We believe shifting students to five days a week across these grades at the same time will monitor and will monitor and lead to a smoother transition for students and their families, their teachers, and school staff. Monday, April twenty-six, immediately follows our spring recess or April vacation. This afternoon, DESI approved our waiver request, and within the last hour, we've notified families in their preferred language about this updated timeline. We continue to process the surveys we sent to all families, asking them to select five days of in-person learning or five days of remote learning for the remainder of the year. In the letter sent to families today, we asked parents and caregivers who have not yet completed the survey to do so by Monday, March twenty-ninth. You'll see here that we have heard from families of more than 38,000 students, representing nearly seventy-four percent of our students across the district. About fifty-nine percent of our families have selected five days of in-person learning, while forty-one percent prefer fully remote learning. Here you will see the number of shifts in learning model preferences. About eighty percent of students are staying with their current learning model. The majority of families who previously preferred hybrid learning are now opting for in-person learning, while the majority of families who prefer remote learning are again choosing that option. Starting five days of in-person learning immediately following spring recess provides the district the opportunity to communicate updates with families in a timely manner and will also ensure most of our teachers and staff have received their vaccines. In addition, this timeline provides our educators the time to make adjustments to their instructional approach in response to the learning model shifts of their students. in response to the learning model shifts of their students. We continue to review the updated guidelines from the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, released on Friday, March 19th, which states that schools should plan to maintain at least three feet of social distancing between students in the classroom while maintaining six feet between adults in shared spaces and when eating. As mentioned in recent communications with families, once fully in-person learning is implemented, classroom sizes and layouts will be adjusted in some cases. For students learning in person, families can expect educators teaching in classrooms, though staffing assignments may shift. Facility modifications will vary by building. Schools may need to utilize larger rooms in their buildings as well as outdoor spaces. In classrooms, desks will be at least three feet apart. Teachers and staff should maintain six feet of distance from students and other staff when feasible. BPS will continue to adhere to health and cleaning protocols currently in place in all of our schools. More information about our health and safety protocols is available at bostonpublicschools.org reopening. As a reminder, in-person learning is currently on a hybrid schedule. The majority of our students learning in person are in buildings two days a week. Many of our high in-person priority students are in school buildings four days a week. We are so excited to welcome back our students in grades nine through 12 who have opted into the hybrid learning model this coming Monday, March 29th and Thursday, April 1st. All students will continue in their current learning model until families are notified of the date. Students may return to school five days a week. They'll also get their transportation notices during that time. I wanna quickly remind everyone that Friday, April 2nd is Good Friday and that there will be no in-person or remote learning and all BPS employees have a paid holiday. Finally, I wanted to let you and you, Madam Chair, and the committee know that my team is working closely with our BSAC students. I've met with them personally, spoken to them, many of them at their request, either privately. And I will continue to do so as we bring healing and listen to them, honor their voice about the direction they wanna see for the BSAC organization going forward. Once that is complete, we will work with BSAC and have them appoint a BSAC representative to this body. So with that, that's my superintendent report.
Thank you so much, Superintendent. I will now open it up for questions and discussion from the committee. If you could raise your hand virtually or in your box. Mr. DeRusso, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Two question, well, one comment, one question. I met with some East Boston families earlier this week and they they expressed concern about receiving information with respect to the choices of in-person or or hybrid or remote and specifically those that didn't have access to email and those that have low literacy, either in in English or in or in Spanish. And so I just wanted to put put that out there. I don't know if that's, you know, if that's representative of families that are of limited, you know, English language or are not literate. But it was raised to me by a group of families, so I'll raise that issue. And I have another point, I don't know if I say my next point. I was able to read the the letter from the commissioner, which, I don't know, seemed tartly worded, but but it's clear that there's no, that we're not gonna be granted further, you know, further waiver. So are we confident that come April 26th, that all our families who choose to to be in person, that that will be, that everyone will be ready for that? Thank you.
Yep, thank you for those questions. One of the feedback we got was about the choices that families could have. And so I do wanna acknowledge that there were families that gave us feedback about whether they could choose hybrid. But I just wanted to make clear to the public that that was not an option, that after April 4th, hybrid learning was not not gonna be recognized by the state. So they will only have two models recognized by the state, that is, five days of in-person and remote. As for the outreach, we were able to send 5,600 families without email this notice and request for them to change by postal mail. And we also did school-based outreach and our family liaisons also were outreach. So between school leaders and families and teachers doing email, doing the survey, and also doing postal mail, you know, we were trying to reach as many as we can. We also have the date open until 3:29. So, you know, get the word out and help us any way that we can to continue to try to get every single family responding that can. But right now, those families that haven't responded, I know our school leaders are reaching out to those families with their teachers just to make sure we're also defaulting students to five-day in-person who were defaulted previously to hybrid. I think you had one other question about.
Just on the preparedness, given that it appears the commissioner won't grant us a waiver.
Yes, so we feel pretty prepared to go. For the April 26th, the only thing right now is we have a couple of schools where we have 90% plus saying that everybody wants to come back. And so we're just figuring out those schedules right now, working the with the school leader and their teachers to make sure that we have all of the staffing. As you know, we had a number of teachers who were on leave. So we are working those out. We also are working through the capacity and storing some furniture so that we can make sure everybody fits in those school buildings. And this is especially true where we have to still observe the six feet of distancing due to serving of lunch.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent, for your report. Also, just wanna also congratulate Mayor Janey. It's really great to have a mayor from Roxbury. So looking forward to working together. My my questions have to do with just two questions of how, you know, how are things going with the hybrid? Mainly wanna know if there's any, you know, what's going on with the pool testing? If there's been any, you know, incidents there that concerns? And also any challenges with transportation?
Thank you, Dr. Rivera, for your questions. I think hybrid learning has been going well. And, you know, teachers were happy to be back with their students. They had the creative scheduling, so where there were challenges, they were able to work through that. Capacity is not an issue when you're in hybrid, as you know, because there's two days of learning for Monday, Tuesday, and then we take the Wednesday and then we have the next cohort come for Thursday, Friday. So that hasn't been an issue. Transportation Department, as I've reported at several times, the school committee has just really rallied. I'm just so proud of our bus drivers in our transportation department who are getting on-time performance numbers like they've never gotten before. Our trans dev contractor has really stepped up as well. And they've had some changes in leadership and have put in new accountability measures and ways to measure their performance. So we're excited about that. I do wanna say, I think it helps that the streets aren't as congested as they typically are in Boston. But we are running about 70, 70%, 75% of our routes, same same route. So I don't think that that's an issue. I do think it's a lot to do with our transportation department and the performance measures and just their own accountability around high performance and serving our children. So I'm really, I'm excited about that. That's been going well. Our Food Nutrition Services team feels that they're gonna be ready and they too are doing just great work. As for the academic learning, we do have teachers still simultaneously teaching. That is a challenge. So we are trying to find ways where we can do co-teaching models, where we can do creative schedules, you know, so that when they come in person, they're not, they're not having to, you know, be on the computer and the teacher's not having to teach two different ways, you know, two different pedagies. And that has still continued to be a struggle for for our teachers. But we continue to work through it and try to find the best practices across the district.
Do you have any any data around the pool testing and whether there's? I I just know that there were very few children at my son's school that participated that first week. And so I'm curious how we're we're dealing with that.
Yep, thank you for that, Dr. Rivera. We had about 300 pool tests last week and I I don't have the the latest number across the district. And of that, I think we had eight of those pools that showed up positive. So we are continuing to do the pool testing. Consent is the issue. We must get consent from parents and still parents are not wanting to consent for the for the pool testing. But also, I wanna give a huge shout out to our nurses. They took this on. They've been helping us with it. I just can't thank our nurses enough for doing and conducting the pool testing for us. We do have also teacher testing that we are still doing. It's still a huge piece of our mitigation effort around keeping COVID out of our schools. So it is important to do the student testing, the pool testing, as well as their teacher testing that we have in 53 of our schools. And those, there's teacher teacher testings available to everybody, but we have it in 53 of our schools at any one time. And then they are able to, we pair our schools together.
So just sorry to follow up, but so has there been some additional communication with families in order to get more consent to the pool testing? That'll be my last question.
Yeah, so I think I'm trying to get someone to help me out with the answer on the the continued outreach. But we can get you an update on on what we're doing in terms of continuing to try to get students consenting to it because it is a really important mitigation effort for us. This will be extremely important, I think, also at high school. I do wanna say that I am working toward, once high schoolers are able to be vaccinated, that we are looking into the possibility of being able to do that if we if we can any way to support our students. We have done flu vaccination clinics prior. So if there's any way that we can try to support our students getting vaccinated, that too will help us.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, thank you. I wanna join my fellow members to congratulate Mayor Janey and certainly look forward to working with her in her new role. Question is about the quality of the learning experience. I know we're gonna be going from, you know, two days in the hybrid to five days rather quickly. And the question is, what is the hybrid experience now? Is it more, you know, laptop-based, even if with with half the group in person and half the group, you know, virtual? Or are the students that are in the classrooms able to, you know, access more hands-on learning? And then my second question will be, as we move to four or five days, are there issues that people have raised as concerned? Or have there things that they have learned that they are pleasantly surprised by as they try to juggle all of these new opportunities?
Well, thank you, Ms. Robinson, for those questions. Just to get back, my staff did send me a text that we have 5,500 consents so far, Dr. Rivera. And as for the learning model, it's different at every school and it could be different even by classroom or by grade level, right? So like at our early childhood classrooms, they're really trying to not have the use of the computers because they realize it's hard for littles to access. So they're doing a lot of the co-teaching model at the at the early childhood centers that we have. There is at the elementary and high school level an approach where, you know, kids will zoom together on, you know, in a call, do the morning meeting together as a community and then maybe shut down the community computer, do some independent practice at home. And then while they're in person, then the teacher will teach them in person. Then there's also the simultaneous learning that happens where you have the students on the computer or not on the computer, but the teacher's just projecting the kids on the computer and the teacher's just teaching regularly in the classroom. And then you have models where you have true true classes that are just in person and the teacher's teaching just in person. And the other teacher is teaching remote and they may have more kids in the remote classroom, like class size is 22, but they're working together. So they have 30 kids in the remote and the in-person teacher has the other 18 or 20.
What about things like food service? Are the, are we able to act, you know, activate the My Way cafes? Or what kind of food will we be transitioning from to? Again, with the whole idea of five days.
Yes, we are moving toward all of that onsite preparation. And so I could certainly have Laura Benavides give you an update and provide an update. We did update the city council the other day as well, so we can certainly make that available. We are having onsite preparation already at 20 of our schools. And so we continue to expand onsite fresh meals at our schools when they're open in person.
Great, thank you.
Very proud of our Food Nutrition Team. We're almost at 5 million meals that we've served. It's just amazing.
Yeah, wow.
And really, without a glitch. I mean, at the beginning, we were serving a lot of shelf-stable and I knew that was a concern of our community and of our parents. And this Food Nutrition Team really worked hard to get refrigerated buses, get a new contract so that we could then start delivering fresh, fresh meals and preparing fresh meals onsite. Our staff seems happier preparing these fresh meals, reopening our My Way cafes and getting everybody ready, getting everybody ready to just be a little bit more normal too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair O'Neill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to say, as excited I am by our students getting back into classrooms, I'm also excited that we're getting back into classrooms too. So I had the opportunity to visit a couple of schools last week and this week as well and and in response to my fellow members who are asking about, you know, the experience in the classroom. It's nice to see how it is working with students being taught in person while also a number being on a large screen. And, you know, I was in one school where they're doing that and another school where the school leader said, no, I chose not to do that. And students, the teachers who are in the classroom are teaching the students and then we've set up the schedule that others are being taught remotely at the same time, but by different teachers as they rotate the schedule. So the flexibility that I saw was at the local school. But I was in a fifth grade classroom at the Aron Burger and the teacher was teaching poetry and the students on the screen were chiming in as much as the students in the classroom. And that was interesting to see. So it was, it was, I'm glad to see that. And to see, you know, the food service workers preparing meals that were gonna be served that day. It's it's nice to be getting back. And and lastly, I do wanna comment, as my fellow members have, there is another historical significance to Mayor Janey becoming mayor in addition to what has been addressed. And as far as I know, this is the first time we have someone who made a career out of being an educational advocate, now being mayor of the city of Boston as well. Many of us know Mayor Janey well from her times with Mass Advocates for Children and working with the school committee and pushing our thinking. So she she knows her stuff when it comes to education in the city of Boston. And the superintendent and I were with her in a classroom on Tuesday where the conversation with students led by students turned to the importance of bilingual education, the importance of knowing two or three languages when you graduate, the importance of culturally relevant curriculum that students can engage with. And it was actually a great conversation. So I join the my colleagues in congratulating Mayor Janey and look forward to working with her.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Are there any further questions from?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Are there any further questions from any other committee members? Okay, any second rounds? And and thank you, Dr. Rivera. I keep forgetting you can actually type also in the chat that you will have a question. Thank you for that. All these this whole year on Zoom and still trying to get acclimated. So, okay, thank you so much, Superintendent. I will only just add that my daughter started hybrid and she is so happy. She started last week in person, two days, it's just over the moon. And it was just so nice, you know, seeing the the community come back together. It's obviously different than, you know, doing assembly on Zoom. And and like the vice chair said, there's a lot of flexibility in terms of how they were, how they are teaching the class that's in person and the class that's at home. And they they have a rotating schedule as well. So I I know she's looking forward to just being back full-time. And thank you for the update on. Oh, I'll also say with the pool testing, she's she's I was I I I volunteered her. I and I know she was terrified to do that, and I told her that's the only way, you know, that I would feel comfortable. And she she did the test. She said it was really easy because she's she's gone with me and seen me do it, and it's not a lot of fun. But apparently whoever we're using is just is it different? And it's not, it doesn't feel like it's going in your brain. And she said the nurse came in and it was they were showed him how to do it. It was really calm and that it was really easy. She said it was super easy. So if anybody's afraid, my daughter is like, I love her, but she's the biggest scary cat. And if she can do it, trust me, like, anybody can do it. So it will be fine. And then I just want to say thank you for thank you for the update around BSAC, myself and the vice chair also meeting with BSAC. I was at their meeting on Monday evening that they had. They did an excellent job facilitating, giving an update and having a question-answer period. I look forward to their conversation on restructure and then their decision on who will be the the next school committee rep. And I just want to just take a moment and just really congratulate you, Superintendent and the team on the graduation rates. Not an easy feat, especially during this time. So I just really want to recognize that. And also, you know, thank our students and thank their families because it has been, you know, all hands on deck. And then also thank all of the staff, obviously, who did double time as well. And lastly, I'll just say that I I'm really in support of what your last comment around having vaccines for for the high school students. I think that's great. And, you know, it's going to go a long way towards making sure that all of our staff and all of our families feel safe during this time. So thank you for keeping that front and center. And, you know, I know that you'll push on that. So if there is, if there are no further questions, I would like to entertain emotion to receive the superintendent's report.
Removed.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the role?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
I did not hear the entire report. However, I I listened in on the question from the members, so I also say yes.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved unanimously.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sullivan. As we move into public comment this evening, I have been doing a lot of thinking and talking to several members about the comments that Dr. Coleman shared near the conclusion of our last meeting about committing to a more civil tone in our comments during school committee meetings. We are public servants, and we are making critical decisions that impact the lives of more than fifty-one thousand students and their families and more than ten thousand staff members. This is a responsibility that we all take with great seriousness and one that weighs heavily on us. But it is what we signed up to do. We join the committee to guide the district to make decisions that are in the best interest of students. We're not always going to agree, and regular pushback on our ideas and our policies is an important part of the public deliberation that makes our policies stronger. We welcome difficult questions. We want to engage in hard conversations. We are open to criticism. Those are all part of the role that we play, and we need to welcome all of those comments because it is part of the public accountability process. Disagreement is an important part of democracy, and answering questions is an important part of our commitment to transparency and accountability. We need to hear when people disagree with our proposals. That's why we present a proposal and then vote on it at a later meeting. So the committee and the public can ask questions and give feedback to shape the final decision. But I do have to agree with Dr. Coleman that the tone and tenor of recent debates with members of the public have surpassed disagreement and turned into personal indictments. You can question our thinking or our motivation to take a certain action without questioning our commitment to the students of Boston, their families, and their educators. You can push back on an idea without pushing personal attacks. It's an unfortunate reflection of the larger public dialogue that has grown troublesome and concerning as rhetoric and insults have become part of the public dialogue. As members of the BPS community, I hope that we can work together to reach a higher level of civility. And lastly, I would like to personally thank Michael O'Neill, who is the Chair of the Council of Great City Schools for his role in facilitating the sixty-fifth Annual Legislative Policy Conference this weekend, which a number of the members participated in. We were able to get legislative updates, and we were able to hear from Secretary Cardona and also from Bob Woodward, to name a few people. And thank you to our superintendent, who asked an amazing question regarding English language learners and regarding the use of culture as an asset for our community. That was a wonderful question, and I want to just thank Mr. O'Neill because you see him here at these meetings, but there's so much more that he's doing. And the Council of Great City Schools is a wonderful connection for this body. I sit on a meeting every Friday, and as does Mr. O'Neill, he chairs it with board members from across the country. And so I'm able to hear what other school boards are doing, how they're tackling things, including seeing what other districts are planning to do in terms of the federal dollars that are coming down, which gets shared with us and is also shared with other superintendents. So I found the conference just be amazing. So thank you so much. We are now going to move on to general public comment, and I will turn it over to Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have ten speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and I will remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Thank you for your cooperation. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure you are signed into Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for a public comment. And that will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with our students, starting with Ariana Rodriguez and Jessiel Alvino, and they will be followed by Ari Rodriguez, Jason Diaz, and Taysha Kalado. Ariana?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Okay. Hi, my name is Ariana Rodriguez. I am a youth community organizer at Sociedad Latina in a senior student at Margarita Matisse Academy and a resident of South Boston. I am here today to advocate for ethnic studies courses to be fully funded and implemented as a standard for all Boston public schools. First of all, I would like to thank the school board and the superintendent for working with organizers and realizing the goal of creating the position of a full-time ethnic studies coach slash coordinator to train teachers on a ninth-grade ethnic studies intro curriculum. We are glad to see this wins in the fight for ethnic studies in BPS. And we want to ask for your continued support to expand ethnic studies model for ten to twelve-grade students. We all understand that ethnic studies courses are needed in our public schools since the majority of BPS students are Black and Indigenous students of color whose cultural histories are not reflected in the standard US history curriculum. This is not only necessary for us as Black and Indigenous students, but also for our white counterparts. Ethnic Studies is an interdisciplinary program which aims to develop fundamental skills and critical thinking and historical analysis, which also provided an understanding of the interactions of race, class, gender, and sexuality in the experiences of a range of social groups. In order for BPS to truly live up to their goals of being an anti-racist education system, we must ensure that we are going, we are undoing the harm caused by generations of flawed curriculum which taught youth about the oppression of our people and not about our assets, culture, and language. We need to make sure we are providing a truly equitable model for anti-racist education beginning in the with the ninth-grade intro course and expanded on this model by also offering Black Latinx AAPI and Native Indigenous history options for students across all students, all schools in the district. All students should have the opportunity to learn about from about their own background, race, and ethnicity. Throughout my early AKA schooling, I was not given an outlet to explore my identity. Upon entering Sociedad Latina, though, as a sophomore in high school, I learned that there was a lot of complicated history in the US that led me to have questions about my race and Puerto Rican ethnicity. Youth like me are able to engage in a curriculum associated that fosters student belonging and self-identity through the Kansas York curriculum. We need to provide our students the opportunities to take courses which help them understand their own identities along with learning about their others, which in turn fosters a greater sense of empathy. Part of ensuring an anti-racist education model for BPS should include the following. Firstly, fully funding ethnic studies courses for every high school in BPS and mandate every school offer this as an opportunity for their students to build critical consciousness and become effective global citizens in the world. And secondly, we would like to advocate for the integration and support of district partnership with CBOs like Sociedad Latina, who specialize in working with diverse communities to enhance learning and opportunities to connect students to this work beyond the classroom. Thank you again, Secretary Maria Cacilia, Madam Chair, your school committee board members. I am sorry my partner was not able to participate today, but on the on his behalf, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ari Rodriguez with Jason Diaz and Taysha Kalado.
And I just want to remind all of you guys, if you could speak a little bit slower.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Yeah, I wanted to turn on my camera, too, but it didn't give me the option to. Not that I saw, sorry.
Sorry. Would you be able to start without it?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, when you're ready.
Mm-hmm. I'm just, is Ariana here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Ari Rodriguez. I'm a youth community organizer at Sociedad Latina, a senior at Margarita Matisse Academy and a resident of Maripan.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jason Diaz. I am a youth community organizer at Sociedad Latina, a senior at Madison Park High School and a resident of East Boston.
Hi, my name is Taysha Kalado. I am a youth community organizer at Sociedad Latina, a freshman at Oxford High School and a resident of Dorchester.
Today, we are here to advocate for the BPS budget to include immediate funding for more guidance counselors and mental health support. We acknowledge they were unable to remove SROs, but we would like to request they will implement a transparent and equitable process for reviewing SROs job descriptions. We ask they will include BIPOC BPS youth in the review process as well. We also wanted to say that we are happy to see ninety-five new social work positions. Thank you for adding these positions, and we ask you to please keep adding more social workers to the budget every year.
BPS should have more counselors because cops are not as supportive as counselors to improve youth behavior. For example, students that come from low-income communities deal with struggles with mental health and having to work after school to help support the family. Also, there are conflicts between students within schools, and cops are not always comprehensive as counselors are. Cops can be more impulsive when dealing with fights and violence, while counselors calm students down and help them deal with issues that affect their behavior. If to if schools have more counselors, they will have more adults to talk to about their problems, help them come up with solutions, and ways to cope with their feelings.
From our research, there is not a definite number on how many guidance counselors are hired by the district each year. However, from students' experience, there is only one per most schools. This makes it extremely difficult for students to receive the ongoing help they need from these professionals. We ask that, at the minimum, you double the amount of counselors in BPS, allocating at least two guidance counselors and two mental health counselors for schools.
Lastly, we want to ensure that real change is made to SRO job descriptions. When students return to schools, we do not want them to face the same fears and overly punitive consequences for misconduct. ESL youth leaders are making are asking for BPS to form an equitable working group that is made up BIPOC students, parents, teachers, and other stakeholders to review SROs current roles and come up with ideas for changing them.
Again, we ask you to consider the following. One, use the twenty-twenty-two budget to increase the number of guidance and mental health counselors and double the amount of staff personnel in the budget.
Two, BPS should change the job description of these officers to focus on implementing transformative justice practices, which do not put students on a school-to-prison pipeline. With that, BPS should also form a working group that is made up of BIPOC students, parents, teachers, and other stakeholders to review these current roles. Thank you for your time.
And do I still have time to say just something real quick to BPS committee? Um, I heard you guys talking about sending students back to school, and I just wanted to say that you have no idea of how happy we students are to go back, especially as a senior. It's really difficult to not see my friends since March twenty-twenty. And I know safety is important, but seeing them at this time graduating is the best gift that you could give us. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for saying that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Heishman, and he'll be followed by Sharon Hinton. Rachel Young, and Ruby Reyes. Mr. Heishman?
Mike Heishman, Dorchester, Beja. At your last meeting, I accused you of being complicit with BSAC and Youth On Board, which led to the explosion that resulted in Kimani James resigning from the school committee and many student leaders resigning from BSAC. Yes, I was very, very angry. I was furious. Today, I also want to share that I was also heartbroken. And to lose somebody like Kimani James, he's such an inspiring presence. And for the BSAC students who I don't know who resigned, it's heartbreaking. Yes, I was furious, but I also want you to know it comes from the heart. Thank you, Dr. Casillas and Madam Co-Chair for your comments about your conversations with BSAC students. BSAC students have repeatedly asked the school committee to pass a resolution in support of their representative becoming a voting member of the school committee with a stipend. BSAC students have asked you to pass a resolution calling on DS, DESI, to postpone MCAS this year. Once again, I ask you why these two requests are not on tonight's agenda. And parenthetically, it's like when you don't listen to the students and I've asked and I've supported their request, don't be surprised when there's an explosion. Yes, yes, it's hard to hear this fury, this anger. But if, I don't understand why you're not addressing this. The co-chair talked about praising the president for his statements on gun control. This is within your power to address. Last night, I attended a meeting with BSAC students who had decided to work with the school department to reshape and restructure BSAC. It was a fantastic meeting. I am very proud of our student leaders. Top-down management by our students must end. BSAC should become student-led and the adults who work with them should support their leadership. Dr. Casillas and school committee members should genuinely support student leadership. The BSAC representative to the school committee should have a vote and stipends. Take advantage of the opportunity that these student leaders are providing you. Work with them and create new and appropriate relationships. We need a fully funded foundation budget. According to the information that I received, roughly 40% of BPS students don't have a functioning library at their schools and more than half of the students in K-8 schools don't have a science lab. We don't have enough money for a foundation budget. And I heard on the budget before us and asked the mayor, new mayor, for additional funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Heishman. Our next speaker is Sharon Hinton.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Hinton, parent of a BPS grad who's now a graduate student at Northeast University and homeowner in Hyde Park. I'd like to also add my congratulations to Mayor Janie and her historic place in history in the city of Boston. And I'm also encouraging the Boston School Committee and Superintendent Casillas for tackling the difficult job of reopening the district during an ever-changing pandemic. I feel your pain as an educator and I see you guys working diligently and I admire you. Even though I may not always agree, I do admire you. So my questions are, what are the plans for student voice in the school committee? In the future, I attended the recent town hall with remaining BSAC students and I encourage the Boston School Committee and the superintendent to continue to employ restorative justice measures to make this student body whole and still include those students who resigned, including advocating for student voting compensation. Question two, how is the grad rate highest in four years? When months ago, 58% of Black students in high schools were failing. That was reported in The Globe based on last year's grades, but I'm wondering what's going to happen in the coming year. Question number three, I'm encouraged by the Exam School Task Force proceedings. I've been following the court case and participating in the task force. And I applaud the Boston School Committee and Superintendent through this process and they're supporting this process. And Superintendent, that's a very creative thing to do as well as the Boston School Committee. You guys have been named in a lawsuit and that's not an easy position. Question number four, I also encourage the Boston School Committee to keep holding community listening sessions to keep the community aware of the exam school admissions process and demystify that, as well as other distributed decisions such as the MOU between DESI and the district, which was actually implemented three days before we shut down last March in the pandemic. Thank you very much for listening to me. I'm still engaged in the process. I'm a supporter of you, but I'm not going to sit here and rubber stamp stuff that I don't agree with. And I hope you continue to encourage this open conversation with myself as well as the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Young. She'll be followed by Ruby Reyes and Edith Bazile. Rachel?
Yes, hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
I apologize I can't join with my camera. My name's Rachel Young. I'm a parent of a first grader at Sumner Elementary in Roselandale where we also live. I've spoken before you when we met in person, so it's good to see you again and participate. Tonight, I'm before you to ask for assistance with our surround care program at the Sumner. We currently have two surround care programs. We have a program that's run through the Boys and Girls Club, which is income restricted. And then we have a second program that's for family of means. This means that in effect, we have a segregated surround care program. We don't have a mix. You can't pay more to get into the Boys and Girls Club. There's no scholarships for the more expensive program. We've been trying to work with the principal to come up with some solution to this program, or this is a problem, I should say, especially in light of the fact that we're relaunching it in the fall. This seems like the perfect opportunity to reassess the program, identify its flaws, and fix them. But this is something that we honestly need help from BPS to do. It's not a program that we should be maintaining. It's a status quo that for us is untenable as a parent council. In addition, I'd also like to note, having spoken with the principal today, that one of the reasons that she can't devote her time to some of these issues like surround care and its inequity is because we have other issues at the school, obviously, with the pandemic. But most notably is the wifi at the Sumner. It's not reliable. It's really inconsistent classroom to classroom and it's causing issues for both in-person and remote learning. So the two issues again that I'm bringing forward to you tonight is assistance with making our surround care program more equitable, creating a surround care program that has some kind of sliding scale that's progressive and allows all students to be in the same program together regardless of income. I didn't mention before, but in addition to the segregation, our surround care program also stops at the, or aftercare program, I should say, to clarify, stops at the first grade. So if you're a middle-income family at the Sumner with a first through fifth grader, you have no program. You have no aftercare. And that's compounded this year by the fact that the Rosendale Community Center is closed and won't open until 2022. So, these are real problems for our families right now. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruby Reyes, followed by Edith Bazile. If you can please raise your hands virtually. Ruby?
Thank you. My name is Ruby Reyes and I'm the Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and a Dorchester resident. The recently announced increase in graduation rates is a congratulations owned to students, parents, and teachers who have worked so hard to support their education through a pandemic. The accomplishment also underscores the need to join the over 30 other school committees across the state who have signed a resolution to request the cancellation of MCAS. Additional graduation requirements like the MasCor without additional resources is irresponsible. School budgets need to ensure that students have what they need to meet new graduation requirements that are going to be proposed. Schools that have consistent budget cuts for the past several years include many of our non-exam high schools. Our students would bear the brunt of changing graduation requirements without additional resources. High school redesign is not infusing more resources. It is playing a shell game. School communities are still waiting for an equity analysis on the weighted student funding formula that creates the majority of a school budget. We are still waiting for an equity analysis of the Build BPS Master Facilities Plan that could change the course of our response to the pandemic. The Build BPS Stakeholders Group, of which Beja is a part of, recently released a survey to assess basic school infrastructure such as facilities, programs, and staff. The survey found that across the board, most schools were missing basic things. The survey has shown that more than a third of students don't have a functioning library. Approximately 55% of students in K-8 and middle schools don't have a science lab and about 8% of students in middle and K-8s don't have an art teacher. Are you all about to talk about the budget, asking yourselves if you're making the financial commitments to support new graduation requirements? Are you advocating for the Student Opportunity Act to be fully funded, not to be replaced by the CARES Act or use Baker and Riley's inaccurate enrollment declines, but fully funded? Are you making financial commitments that start and plan for equity from our buildings to what happens in them? Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Edith Bazile.
Thank you so much. My name is Edith Bazile and I'm so happy that I am able to follow the chair's recommendation to speak slowly and thank you for the extra minute. I'm a BPS graduate, mother of a Tech Boston graduate, former BPS special education teacher and administrator and grandmother of a BPS student in Dorchester. I want to talk this evening about the McKinley Schools. The McKinley Schools are a set of four special education schools for students with primary emotional and behavioral impairments. These are students who are primarily Black and Latinx males. Black and Latinx students are overrepresented in special education and disproportionately segregated from their peers. In 2017, the McKinley Southern Academy was quietly scheduled for demolition. A new $83 million school was to be built, but not for the McKinley students, for the Quincy Upper School. Public and staff protests stopped the Quincy Upper takeover. Why wasn't a new building constructed for the McKinley School students? Well, because this is an example of the racial inequities in facilities that serve primarily Black and Latinx students. Currently, McKinley Prep High School has no gym, no cafeteria, no science labs, and no library. Classrooms are small and therapy space is inadequate. Bathrooms are subpar. High school redesign completely bypassed McKinley Prep. It's no surprise that 60% of the McKinley Prep students are chronically absent. Would your child be excited to attend a building with a crumbling infrastructure where they must go through metal detectors, are met with school police, and yet must take the same state test as Boston Latin school students who have abundant resources? The McKinley students deserve better. Students with disabilities should not be separated and segregated by classrooms or schools, except when required in order to meet appropriate services. As BPS fully reopens, there is an opportunity to reimagine the concept of McKinley Schools with a focus on inclusion without gentrifying the building or removing its current student population. It can start with empowering student, parent, and community voices. This would align with Dr. Casillas's commitment to becoming an anti-racist district and her commitment to inclusion, equity, and diversity, as well as a fresh start for our most marginalized and high-needs students.
20 seconds.
BPS, along with the Division of Equity Strategy and Opportunity Gap, should enforce the use of the Equity Planning Tool and produce a long-term, comprehensive facility plan that prioritizes equity, inclusion, and educational excellence for all of its students, most especially McKinley students who have been left behind. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bazile. Chair, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Sullivan. And thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspective. Especially thank you to the youth. And it's great to hear that you're excited to go back to school. Your testimony is very important to us. We are now going to move on to action items and just wanted to share with everyone that the committee will not be taking a vote on the goals and guardrails this evening. Instead, we will take more time to continue to meet with stakeholder groups and gather feedback. I want to thank the English Language Learners and Opportunity Achievement Gap Task Forces, SPEDPAC, Beja Beam, MAC BTU, the Boston Network for Black Student Achievement, and others for sharing their thoughtful input with the committee. We all share the same goal of improving student outcomes. And as our superintendent so many times reminds us, no one of us is as smart as all of us. The committee is happy to take the extra time to get this right and we look forward to taking a vote on the goals and guardrails on April 7. Our first action item this evening is grants for approval totaling $73,243. I will now open it up to the committee for any questions or comments. Feel free to raise your hand virtually in the box or feel free to put it in the chat. Okay, if there is no questions, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the grant as presented. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second? Now, thank you, Dr. Rivera. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRougeau?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
The grants are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our final action item this evening is the superintendent's final fiscal year, FY22 General Fund Budget Recommendation in the amount of $1,294,719,861. You'll recall that BPS Chief Finance Officer Nate Pooter presented the superintendent's revised FY22 budget proposal at our March 17 meeting. I want to thank all of the community members who shared their priorities with us during the budgeting process. I also want to thank the city for its strong financial commitment and the superintendent and her team for creating a budget focused on improving student outcomes, advancing equitable recovery, and promoting the whole school community's health and wellness amidst COVID-19 pandemic. And before I open it up to the committee for any questions or comments, any final words from the superintendent?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do have some final words. And thank you for giving me just a moment to first thank all of our incredible finance team for putting this budget together. In particular, I'd like to thank Miriam Rubin, our new budget director, and Yvonne McCray, our new director of grants and external funds. In the midst of this pandemic, these two women stepped into new leadership roles and have been absolutely incredible. To the budget analysts who have spent countless hours, thank you. To the hundreds of school leaders and our district staff who put students first in their budget planning, I want to thank them. And I'm incredibly proud of our team and I'm proud of this budget. We have been and remain guided by the belief that every single child in every classroom in every school deserves the same and sometimes, for some historically underserved students, even greater opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive and have the resources to do it. Our teachers need these resources and have been asking for these resources. When we have greater expectation of what we expect in closing opportunity gaps and raising achievement and creating a more equitable environment, I know that our new mayor will demand of us, it's even more important that the resources go directly to those who are closest to our students and that's our teachers. to those who are closest to our students and that's our teachers. As we strive for this equity and to become an anti-racist district and to make anti-racist decisions, we're called upon to think radically different about our values and how those values are demonstrated by our budgets. Governor Mark Dayton once said to me, "A budget is a reflection of our values." And I absolutely believe that. Our task this year is to return well, to recover strong and then to reimagine what's possible for our students with a key and sharp eye on equity. To prepare our schools for a safe return, we're making these investments. We're continuing our increased investments and building off of those from last year on having more custodians, increasing our spending on facilities, maintenance contracts. And our goal is simple. We want our buildings to be the point of pride that our students deserve, that they have access to the latest technology for learning and that they're healthy, safe places for kids to go. To support our students in recovery and ensure equitable access to critical supports, we've proposed an eighty-one staffing person increase to our new family liaisons. This is on top of the family liaisons we added last year. We're going to add ninety-five new social work positions. And if anyone doesn't think this is an equity move, it is absolutely an equity move because it is essential. These two positions are essential to our hub school community model, which is going to allow for us to be able to provide support, direct support to students and families. Because you have to get at supporting families if you want to support children. Our new investment in these family liaisons builds upon our investments again that we made in our transformation schools. I think we had about thirty-seven liaisons. And we had, we made sure that they were bilingual in the positions in schools that had over fifty percent parents speaking a home language other than English. Our investments in social workers also build on our FY twenty-one investments. Moving beyond our initial investment of social workers in our transformation schools this year to bringing at least a point five social worker to every BPS school and many of them having one point oh or more, depending on your staffing, because we're working from a ratio. The liaisons and social workers are truly reflective of the racial and cultural and linguistic diversity of our BPS community. They've been able to build deep and authentic relationships and you've been able to hear from some of them in our budget hearings. This year, in partnership with our Office of Student and Community Impact, schools have worked closely with their Equity Roundtables and school site councils to integrate this investment into their schools' racial equity strategies and ensure that their new social workers are well-equipped to honor the different methods of healing with their students. We also know our students and our schools have seen enough instability within the current context of this world and that it's our responsibility to mitigate that instability as much as possible. Schools that are experiencing high declines in enrollment and students in these schools are more likely to be high-needs or historically marginalized populations. To that end, we have committed to ensuring that schools do not have to make cuts that you might typically see within these types of enrollment declines. This has been a strong value of ours to hold our schools steady during this pandemic. My watch is talking to me.
I'm not sure I understand.
Instead, we have invested eighteen point five million beyond the typical soft landing support we provide to schools to supplement weighted student funding. Through our goal to develop into an actively anti-racist school district, we know this work is not only structural and systemic, but also adaptive. We need to change minds, change policies and then resource the work. We cannot simply add resources and expect different results. This will require a focus on our central office and how we are organized to support our schools. I have asked our Office of Equity Strategy and Opportunity Gaps to lead this work to determine how we can use our ESSER funding, nearly four hundred million over the next few years, to come back not as a better version of the district we were, but as a reimagined district, one that our students deserve and a which our students thrive. With that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Superintendent. I will now open it up to the committee for any final questions or comments. If you can just raise your hand virtually in the box or put it in the chat. Dr. Coleman?
Yeah, Dr. Cassilius, I want to thank you for all the hard work that you and your team have done to bring the budget to this point. Clearly, we're in a position where we have, we have, we have more resources to spend than we've had in previous years, as evidenced by the, the, some of the community responses are much less, much more tempered. But I also want to appreciate the fact that you've identified that we have a lot more work to do going forward, that this is the first step in an iteration towards constant improvement. So even as commentary about needing more guidance counselors, improving particular school facilities, identifying the ways in which particularly those schools that have been underserved and underfunded need more and acknowledging that and that we, as soon as this is done, understand that we have to start thinking about going forward. So I know, you know, and I, as the chairperson identified earlier, I think we just constantly need this community feedback on what they see as the issues and problems. And we welcome that so we can plan to go forward. So I want to thank you for the degree to which you've listened to the community, listen to us and are making great steps forward, understanding that we have more to go. So thank you for you and your team for your great and hard work.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Mr. DeRougeau?
Yes, thank you. So I have a few comments. One is I think I'm in the unique position as the newest member of the school committee that I was, I was dropped into this process at the finish line. So, you know, didn't have the benefit of the, you know, what I've seen, the painstaking work and the back and forth with the public, with my colleagues, with staff, with, you know, the mayor's office and so forth. And this, as I evaluate, you know, whether or not to support this budget, I can see there's, there's a lot to recommend. I think the superintendent, you highlighted the, you know, the increase with respect to social workers, the holding harmless, the schools that have dropped enrollment. I think there's a lot of, a lot of great pieces here. As a, as a general comment and as I was able to do my, you know, my diligence, my accelerated diligence over the past few weeks or several weeks is that, you know, this, as we've all noted, this is the largest budget we've ever had. And we have an enrollment that continues to decrease. When I graduated from BPS in nineteen ninety-nine, we had sixty-eight thousand students in the system and, 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 you know, where we are today in, you know, a little around fifty thousand. And, you know, part of that is the demographic changes of our city. But part of that is the, the choices that our families are making. And I think that, given that we, you know, we have these significant resources, probably resources that couldn't, we couldn't have imagined previously that the expectations are higher than ever. And then the scrutiny understandably and appropriately is higher than ever. We've adopted, in addition to these resources, you know, we've adopted, you know, an ideological lens with around, you know, with the policy around anti-racism. And I think that the, the, you know, the proof is going to be in the pudding with respect to outcomes. And that's something that, you know, I know all families are tracking and of course, we as a school committee will be tracking as well. As a final note, the superintendent raised the ESSER funds, the Biden, the Biden dollars coming in. And first, I want to appreciate the superintendent and her team for educating me on these funds and taking the time to do so. So I, I really appreciate that. And I just want to say on those funds, I know we're going to have broader discussions and the public process around it. But what I want to make sure and kind of put my stake in the ground on it is that, that these funds are used for, you know, the children that have suffered and lost in the, in the past year. That is why we're getting these funds. We're getting it because of their loss. And I want to make sure that even the ones that are graduating this year, that we find a way over, as we spend this money over a number of years, that we can, we can give them benefits as well, even when they leave the system. And the, the test for me, if we're succeeding on that is, you know, can I talk to that family on Chelsea Street in East Boston? And have them tell me explicitly how these funds benefited their child? And, and, and that, I think, is important that families know, you know, my child went through what they went through due to the pandemic, but these funds came in, in my child's name. And, and they were benefited directly by the school system to recover, to be restored. And I think that's going to be critical. So I'll leave it at that. And I want to thank the superintendent and the staff and the team for the painstaking work and putting together this budget. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Yes, first I want to say thank you both to the superintendent and to Mr. Cooter for all the incredibly hard work that yet again has taken place to get us to where we are with the budget. Part of me is very happy and part of me is a bit sad about it. Because now having been through this process for probably, this is my sixth or seventh year, there are patterns that we continue to talk about. And yes, we're spending a lot more money, we're getting a lot of things done. But there's still things that continue to lag that get glossed over as we move forward because new issues are shown. I mean, we've got a pandemic now. But we promised schools walls two years ago that we have not been able to deal with. So one of the pieces I'm hoping that we'll be able to do is to stop and because of the pandemic and because of some of the gains that we have made, and maybe this will take place with the ESSER funds. For example, we need to relook at all of our schools in Bill BPS using the racial equity planning tool because we didn't have that when that BPS, when Bill BPS was first formed. And so there are things that are not being covered in this budget that are critical to giving every child what they need. And so that's where my sadness comes in. Because yes, I am thrilled that we have more social workers and we're getting more counselors and we're getting those things. But, you know, some of our schools will never have an art room because there's no room for an art room or a room for a library. But the question is, you know, you know, as part of Bill BPS, I will ask the same question I've asked many times over. When will we come together to discuss what kind of physical buildings or opportunities within buildings do all of our students deserve? And how will we make sure if we can't fit it in the building? We will find it within their community? And we will rethink, you know, are you better off going to school in your community and accessing your library or your medical care? You know, we seem to have a lot of different concepts that will build greater successes. But it feels like they have some underlying questions we're not willing to ask. And so continuing just to build a bigger and bigger budget doesn't always mean that we're going to be able to solve the, the critical issues that we say we want to. So I'm hoping that we will shift and we look at things like our, you know, the weighted student formula moving forward. Because, you know, the fact is there will always be students declining, schools with declining enrollments. If there are fewer students to have, they're not going to be there. If we as a district choose not to place students in a certain school, that school will have declining enrollments. Those are emotional drains on folk. And so the question is, how do we build the equitable school district that we want without continuing to hang these sort of issues on ourselves, our families all of the time? And maybe with the support of new mayor, as we look at all of these funds that are coming through, that we'll be able to solve some of those things as well. And as I said before, you know, we've got an Opportunity Achievement Gaps Task Force as well as a department, and we are working towards all of this anti-racist work. But we've got to make sure that we are pulling it together in a way to make sure that we're critically looking at what we're doing and holding ourselves accountable. Because it can get, when it gets spread out everywhere, it gets diffuse. And sometimes you don't see what's really happening. So I just, I hope that we will push ourselves to be as strategic and as reflective back to the pieces that we are still not doing as well as we're continuing to immediately respond to the needs moving forward. So yes, I feel like the budget is doing a lot. I know we'll have more time to talk about the ESSER budget. But I feel like I've been at the same place too many times in the past as we're trying to move the budget forward.
I, I do want to, Ms. Robinson, thank you. I do want to remind everyone to that this is a hundred million dollar investment from the mayor. This is the second year of that hundred million dollars. I think it was a historic investment by the city. And I can't, and we've now just been closed, the city's been closed for a year. We know that there's hotels not earning money. We know that businesses aren't bringing in money. We know that the entire economy has tanked. And the Mayor Walsh, former Mayor Walsh, didn't blink to continue this funding. We didn't get one question from the city about this thirty-six million that we're investing. I, I just wanted to break, because if we didn't have this, and I can tell you, my colleagues and I'm sure Mr. O'Neal can tell you this as well, from superintendents across the entire nation, they had cuts that they were making and layoffs because they had to pay for PPE. You know, they had to quickly rally and do HVAC systems and get all of the, you know, health and safety operational needs. Everybody in the district was kept whole. Nobody was laid off for the purposes of the pandemic. And we are not seeing, we had seven or eight people give comments tonight. And a typical budget night, we would have had major cuts when you have an enrollment projection of twenty-five hundred students less in your budget. Add that to the fact of then maybe not having this additional revenue, which is of, also remember, this additional revenue is above and beyond salary increases too. And I don't think the public understands the incredible amount of investment the city is making into our schools. And I just want to, I want to level set and make sure that we are so lucky to have this funding to continue to invest in more equitable schools for our kids. I realize that there is a big fight and there is a lot still more to, to do to really fill the whole, the opportunity gaps that we have for our children across the city. And I also want to recognize that there are huge deficits in the equity of our school facilities. That is not lost on me or on our Bill PPS team. And I will tackle that. If it's the McKinley School in the, you know, our, our schools that are Roxbury, that are smaller, that have been neglected for a long time. There are a lot of things that we have to still do. But with this budget tonight, I just wanted to make sure you all understood that this could have been a whole lot worse because the city is in tough shape with the fact that they've been basically shut down for, for a year. And the investments are still going to continue. So I just wanted to say that, Ms. Robinson. And, and then the new infusion of the Biden relief package is coming. It's welcomed. It is one-time funding, so it's not going to continue beyond the three years. So we have to be careful with it. And that's why we are going to have it placed. Right now I have Ms. Ava Mitchell. It has been working with us on some strategy and putting the strategy around it with Dr. Branson's leadership and the whole entire Equity Office about how we are going to spend this, this, you know, nearly three hundred, four hundred about how we are going to spend this, this, you know, nearly 300, 400 million dollars over the next three years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members who would like to make a comment or ask a question, Vice Chair?
I'd just like to second the superintendent's comments. And, you know, part of Neil Walsh's hundred million dollar commitment was because the superintendent presented a plan of improving over time that Mayor Walsh bought into and agreed to support. And, and I agree completely with you, Superintendent. Meals taxes are down, sales taxes are down, hotel taxes are down, rental cars are down, all those things that flow into the city. There's not a landlord in the city that, commercial landlord in the city, and, and a good percent of our property tax revenue was off of that that is not deeply concerned about occupancy right now. And yet the city stepped up and, and honored the commitment that was made. And I think Superintendent, I applaud the choices that you and your team had made. I, in the investment decisions you have made, I think you're really going at the social emotional health of our students, which is so critical in light of COVID. And, and I also want to say, and, and yes, Superintendent, you talked about a lot of money coming our way very quickly. And so literally just this afternoon, the Biden administration released 81 billion of the 122 million that is planned for publicated 12 education. They released it to the state. So Massachusetts today is getting 1.2 billion of the 1.8 billion they are expecting. That will, money will be flowing to us fairly soon. And so having a thoughtful process on how we spend this is going to be critical. Because, and I hate to sound like the skunk at the garden party, because this is a bit of embarrassment and, and riches for public education right now. The Washington DC legislators stood up and supported public education. And, but they also warned us. So as the chair said, there was the council legislative conference this week. And we heard from Chairman Scott, the chairman of the House, the House Education Committee. And we heard from Chairman Neal, the chair of the Ways and Means Committee. And both of them said explicitly, we are making the investment. We got our colleagues to go along with the investment in public education. But there is an expectation from that. The eyes of the nation are going to be on the public educators that we have to not only provide support for the students who are harmed by this, but that we help them recover their educational loss and improve their educational outcomes. And there will be a lot of eyes making sure that we invest smartly, that we have that happen. There will be a lot of eyes looking out for wasteful spending and we have to be careful against that. There will also be a lot of suggestions on ways to spend this. Some of those suggestions will be helpful, some will be more self-serving and maybe not necessarily focused on student outcomes. And we have to prepare to push back against that as well. I will say that the council is going to provide us and every other member district some support and some best thinking to think about and practices to follow. The superintendent, superintendent's team will be involved in that. And she's already laying out a plan about having public input, being thoughtful about what we do. But I will also caution, we have to be careful against setting up spending cliffs in spending one way that means three years from now, we're making cuts, cuts in people, cuts in programs. We have to be thoughtful about this. I do think this is going to allow us to, the superintendent mentioned, frankly, the limit of, amount of public feedback we received this time. We did hear from a number of communities that were concerned, the Blackstone and others, that were concerned about the physical plant that they, that their students are encountering. And this may be an opportunity to improve a lot of those situations as well. And, you know, what the superintendent just talked about and, and, and Ms. Robinson, when you talked about having an equity lens in how we approach this, I think is critical. We're doing a lot already, you know, rebuilding the car to school, looking for a new place for the Horace Bean School. I echo the comments that were made tonight about the McKinley School population. The more we do for our most vulnerable students, whether it be physical or emotional, you know, the better it can be. And so I'm looking forward to the thoughtful approach that will be coming on this spending that we will have in front of us. But I wholeheartedly support the superintendent and her team for the budget that they have proposed tonight. And having done this, Mr. DeRouge, you mentioned this is your first time and, and you literally jumped on the fire truck as it was moving through with the train as, as it was barreling to the station. I have had the luxury of doing in a, a number of these budgets. And I will say this has been an extraordinarily thoughtful process by the superintendent and her finance team in working with school leaders through this and gathering feedback and making very, not only fighting for additional funding for the district, but then making very thoughtful investment decisions with it. So I wholeheartedly support the budget that's being proposed tonight.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other questions from members? Okay. I also just want to say thank you to the superintendent and to Mr. Cooter and the whole finance team and also all the school leaders, because they play a really, you know, big role in also developing the budget. And I know it's, it is painstaking and it's, you know, it'll be like, they'll have like a day off and then they'll start all over again. It is, it is very painstaking. And I do really want to say thank you also to the Secretary of Labor for, you know, in his time as mayor, for honoring that commitment of the hundred million as, you know, I'm not going to repeat everything the vice chair and superintendent said, but if that is a big deal, when we look nationally, what's happening, it's a really big deal to honor that commitment. So thank you. And I, I agree also that it, you know, it's a thoughtful budget to me when I look at, you know, I, I have experience personally in my home with being with two young people. One who's, who's going to school in person and one who is remote and just started going. And I can see, you know, the difference. And also in the work that I do and seeing the young people and just the, the isolation, the loneliness, you know, the devastation, the challenges of many families that the pandemic has brought on. So I do appreciate that this budget has 95 new social workers. I think we cannot underscore what the trauma that our young people have gone through. And we're going to see those, you know, repercussions for many years to come, I believe. And the family liaisons, I agree, are, you know, very important. That is, I, I do believe that it's not just the family liaison's responsibility, but the family liaison plays a really critical role for connecting our families. Especially we have, you know, so many multilingual families and many of the family liaisons are bilingual, multilingual. And that is really important to be able to have, you know, people that can speak the language and have the same culture. So I do think it has been a thoughtful budget. And, you know, it is a big relief that our schools are being held harmless. That is a big deal. And I could not agree more. We do have the, these dollars coming down. And I do want to be very careful in how they're spent and very strategic. I want to know, you know, five years from now, you know, when I'm not on this committee any longer, to be able to see that we actually, you know, made an impact. As Mr. DeRouge said, I think families knowing, you know, this money impacted me in this way, you know, and students being able to know that. So I, and I appreciate the superintendent already thinking about how to elicit feedback from the community, which of course we will take. And though I'm sure there'll be some great ideas and there'll be other things that are just not possible and not responsible. So we will have to make those decisions when, when they come to us. So again, thank you so much, Superintendent, for leading this process, for the thoughtfulness in the budget. And again, to Mr. Cooter and the whole finance team and all the school leaders. So if there are no further questions, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's final fiscal year FY22 general fund budget recommendation in the amount of 1 billion 294 million 719,861 dollars as presented.
The move.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yeah.
Mr. DeRouge?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
The budget is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our report this evening is on college career and life readiness. And at this time, I am going to turn it over to the superintendent and her team for their presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks, everybody, for the vote on the budget. Very excited about that. I wanted to just quickly mention that on this report, we are trying to align to your school committee's five goals. So part of the work ahead is taking the five goals and then presenting to you kind of a where are we at? So we did that with early childhood. We're now doing that this evening with the, the career and college readiness. So part of this report is sharing with you a summary of what we shared last May on the Mass Core and where we are with our incompletes, our graduation requirements this year and some of the college work we're doing with FAFSA, et cetera. The team has been putting together a very good presentation for you with some data that shows where we're at in terms of our college and career readiness based on the research and some of the indicators that we shared briefly at the prior meeting. I do want to just give a note that we are still in the process of working with our heads of schools on three things that they are looking to have us address. That is the funding of Mass Core. They've brought up also the flexibility in the Mass Core policy for alternative ed school students and students who are credit behind or come into our system over age. And then they've also asked for the timeline to be phased in. So we continue to work with our school leaders around budget and making sure that, you know, they have the right set of resources to actually implement it well. And then the flexibility for our alternative ed students and students who are behind in credits or overage. And the fact that we will phase this Mass Core policy. And I just think it's really important for the school committee members to hear that because those have been the stumbling blocks. I think that have been in, in the way of us adopting a more rigorous and coherent policy across all schools. And so we will continue to work on those agreements, get a budget, and then we'll come back to you for a vote, probably sometime in April. So with that, I'll turn it over to the academic team.
So I am Dr. Lynda McIntyre, and I'm going to talk a little bit about career, college and life readiness as it relates to graduation and our recently graduation rate that we are celebrating. So it didn't happen overnight. For over a decade, we've been working to bring about greater accountability in the rates for student graduation, not purely for statistics, but for greater life outcomes for the students that we serve. So we're going to focus this conversation around the process or the journey that brought us to this wonderful day. And we'll do it from the past, the present and the future as we reimagine this work. We began by developing targeted opportunities to address the graduation rate. We moved our instruction philosophy to a whole child model. And while doing that, we changed our teaching paradigm from being teacher-centered to putting students at the center of learning. Our counselors were developed to move beyond just the GPA and the SAT and other scores that qualified their work and engaged in the development of the whole child's potential and ability. Still, while we found some growth in that, it was not nearly enough. We learned that we needed to pay attention to the emotional well-being of our students and provision for any need that could potentially interrupt their learning. In that sense, we integrated SEL or social emotional learning along with multi-tiered systems of support as a way of understanding that each child may need something different in order to reach their potential. We even went so far as to develop individual learning plans for each student, not to be confused with individual educational plans. From there, as a district, we began to incorporate many more opportunities for a student to graduate. Hence, August graduations, in some schools, there's quarterly graduations, as well as we extended the school year by adding fifth quarter programming. Curriculum and content was also diversified and differentiated to include competency-based learning, project-based learning, career technical education and dual enrollment as a way of addressing student interest and innovation, all while focusing on inclusion. We introduced a system to help us organize all of this work through Panorama. Here we have a platform that allows us fingertip access and real-time performance to address all of the above measures. We are able to create intervention plans, monitor them for progress and update them as well, all growing from the work of the multi-tiered system of support. We are also able to identify need areas in academics, behaviors and attendance. This allows us to maintain an understanding of where each individual student is in their performance, as well as how they feel through the use of surveys that are also provided by Panorama. Moreover, it provides the necessary information that we as educators need to guide and course correct our instruction. That's the past. And Dr. Brueggemann will talk to you about the present.
Yes. Currently, we know that this year more than ever, because of this pandemic, our students will need much support, not only in the area of academics, but also in social, emotional learning and mental health. Despite the pandemic, as Dr. Cassilius mentioned, we have improved our graduation rates from 73% in 2019 to 75.4% in 2020 and nearly nine percentage points since 2014. Our school leaders have worked very hard to disrupt barriers to learning and created innovative approaches for access and opportunities for a student's academic growth. Our current administration has engaged significant investment this year and also for next year in family liaisons, social workers and instructional and transformation coaches as a way of deepening and supporting a student achievement. This has been an initiative that supports the whole student, the whole family, as well as partnerships and continuing to raise our performance around graduation. Moving forward, with a call to action for systems thinking, we will keep disrupting the barriers and create disproportionate access to advanced opportunities across our district for Black, Latinx students, students with disabilities and English learners, as well as the students who are economically challenged and underrepresented. With the implementation of the Core Four, which is part of high school redesign, which includes pre-advanced placement preparation and expansion of current advanced placement courses, creative and technical educational pathway, dual enrollment and early college offerings, international baccalaureate. creative and technical educational pathway, dual enrollment and early college offerings, international baccalaureate. We have and will continue to engage in professional development surrounding all aspects of the Core Four in order to increase rigor and create more opportunities and access for students. Furthermore, we know that we must address Maslow's hierarchy of needs such as safety, love and belonging, self-esteem, et cetera. We must address reduction of trauma, anxiety through social emotional support. We must address attendance and school engagement. We must improve home language access for English learners. Address the thirteen-year for students and continue to engage in partnerships to support the work. Just to name a few challenges to support our students. As we recover from the pandemic, we know that we cannot provide education the same way this, uh, to the same model as in person only within the walls of a classroom. We must be innovative. We must encompass all methods of teaching, whether it's at home, school-to-work, hybrid, online, use the city as a classroom, et cetera, to match students' learning needs. The high school redesign will be very instrumental in achieving these goals. I will now pass it to our colleague, Monica Hogan.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Sullivan, could you go back two slides, please? Thank you so much. Um, so as we begin this presentation, as Dr. Casillas mentioned, we wanted to um, ground the presentation in the school committee's goals, um, the draft that I um, that was shared last week. This last goal, students will graduate from high school with the agency to direct their futures as measured by the percentage of graduates meeting the citywide definition of college career and life readiness. We do have some recent data as highlighted by the superintendent that we will share a little more on now. Next slide. So as noted, um, our twenty-twenty-four-year cohort graduation rate of seventy-five point four percent is the highest graduation rate that Boston has ever seen. This is an increase of eleven percentage points over the last decade. Additionally, the annual dropout rate has decreased over the same time period by two-point-five percentage points to three-point-nine percent in school year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, which is a reduction of over one-third. Fifteen of our high schools saw an increase of over one percentage point in their graduation rate between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. In particular, I would like to highlight the increase in graduation rate at East Boston High School. Six years ago in twenty fourteen, their graduation rate was fifty-six point one percent. Their twenty-twenty rate is eighty-two point one percent, which is an increase of twenty-six percentage points in six years. I'm delighted to be able to introduce East Boston High Head of School, Mr. Philip Ranjaforte, who will share some highlights um, from their school.
Good evening, everyone. Um, first, I'd just like to thank Superintendent Dr. Casillas, along with Dr. Brueggemann and Dr. McIntyre for inviting me to speak tonight. Um, also, I'd like to thank the school committee for providing me with this opportunity to share all the great things that we're doing at East Boston High School. And last, I want to say um, to my staff, the students, parents, and the community partners, I strongly feel that without them, we wouldn't be able to have the increases that we, that we've been seeing throughout the last six years, um, with all their hard work and their trust in, in myself. Uh, it, it really has been a team effort at East Boston High School. Um, so I just want to thank all them. And also, I want to say that it's, it's not just East Boston High School. I know my colleagues throughout the city, I've talked to them, a lot of them. Um, the heads of schools, and they're doing a terrific job as well. Um, they're doing a lot of the same stuff while they're doing other things that are increasing their rates as well. So I, I just want to start off by saying when, when uh, when I was appointed um, head of school back six, seven years ago, the first thing, how, how we, how we progressed to where we are today is we started off with relationships. Um, our biggest thing was relationships, relationships, relationships. If you can farm relationships for kids and you can get them to enjoy school, not just coming and feeling that it's, that it's a chore that they have to come, make it exciting for them, that they're gonna wanna come, they're gonna wanna participate, and that, and the good things are gonna happen to them. And that's what we did. And, and again, I consider it's truly a team effort from, and when I say that, I say cafeteria workers, my, my uh, staff assistants, the teachers, the parents, um, the custodians, everybody has affected our students' lives in one way or the other. So what we did start off with was with the relationships. We really focused that on our first year. And then the second year, we moved into the, the more of the academics. Um, second year in two thousand and fifteen, we changed our schedule. We went to a, a schedule that was um, I'd say, we went from like a six, a six-period to a, to a four-block period, which gave us more time on task, more time for, for, for rigorous instruction. Um, we also went to more semesterized courses. After tenth grade, a lot of the courses are semesterized, which gives us the opportunity to offer more courses and also gives the opportunity there to make up some courses. Uh, especially with the, with the SLIF program. We have a large SLIF population. And uh, obviously, you know, those students, you know, they come over age and they're um, undercredited. And we were able to, by, by doing this schedule, it, it, it allows them, we call it like, we have a S, a SLIF graduation, a little mini, mini graduation, like halfway through the school year, and we'd be able to move them to the SCI courses and things to that effect. And that's really helped, helped us with that. Um, the mid, the mid-year transition has been wonderful for our SLIF students. Um, next, we offer counseling. We do one-on-one counseling for every grade level, every student. Um, you know, we do uh, personal progress reports, plans for them. And uh, seniors, when they are seniors, what we do is we have individual graduation plans for them. By this uh, halfway through this, halfway through this senior year, we meet with every um, senior. We make sure that they're on track. If they're not on track, we're giving them what information that they need to be on track to either graduate in June or graduate in August. Um, you know, those meetings uh, really help. And then the thing that also helps with that is that the parents, they're involved as well, and they sign off on those forms. So they know exactly what it's gonna take um, for those students to graduate. Uh, interventions, we have our own in-house, uh, we call it our FACS program. It's flexible, accelerated, competency-based teamwork services. And those are for students who are extremely behind in credits. It's almost like an in-house alternative program. Um, this program uh, features a flexible scheduling, so we can meet their, their needs, know exactly what they need, uh, so they'll be able to experience that academic success. We also offer credit recovery. Not only is it after school, we also offer in credit recovery during the school day. Um, they can take that as well. And then we also leverage our partners. Our partners are big at East Boston High School. Um, I know that uh, we, 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 we have uh, this year, we were awarded the Mass Grad Grant, which helped us. So we, every year, we also do Twilight, our own Twilight program. Those of you who've been in the district for a long time, if you remember the night school that they called it a Twilight, used to only be at Madison Park. So we were able to raise some money and have our own in-house um, Twilight program. And with the help of the Mass Grad, we were able this year to offer two cycles. We already went to one cycle, and now we're offering our second cycle. We have an attendance committee um, that we, we established, that are making tons of phone calls. Um, also with the Mass Grad, we were able to hire parent ambassadors and teacher ambassadors to reach out to students. Uh, HERC and BAM, we also have a program with the YMCA. Um, you know, hopefully, we'll get that grant again. We are students who, uh, we meet them at the YMCA. We have someone that was trained in the credit recovery program, who at night offers credit recovery for students who need the help um, with that, so. Um, and then, you know, big thing, the base, the base is a program, Robert Lewis and the Base. They've uh, given us a lot of educational support with, with tutoring, things to that effect. East Boston Neighborhood Health Center, I mean, that's a big partner for us. Um, you know, students are able to get all their services here, so it's easier for them to, to do that. Also, we, we, we have a partnership with the Bright Program, the Bright Program and Children's Hospital, along with the East Boston Neighborhood Health Center. That's for students who try to hurt themselves, and then we gradually get them back into school, and they're in a special program. So that has helped us as well. Uh, a lot of our acceleration academies, we do weekend acceleration academies focusing on uh, weekend acceleration academies for, for MCAS, for all students. Um, we also have intensive tutoring after school for the eleventh and twelfth graders who did not pass the MCAS. We need the extra support as well. Um, we, you know, we're offering a, a lot of ELL programs for students to help them with English, to pass along, um, to get them to where they need to be. We double-block in the school uh, for our ELL students. And uh, again, the uh, the Twilight has been a, a, a big program. And then last, I would say, our extensive summer school program. Um, every year, we've been able to, I'd say, average about five to fifty students that graduate in August. They just need a little extra time and support, and we get them to the finish line. So that has been uh, you know, very helpful for us with our graduation rate. And, you know, and currently, you know, former ELLs and ELLs make up nearly seventy-five percent of our population. Um, so we're always uh, helping them and giving them the extra support in summer as well. Ensures that they're getting the, the, the English language year-round. So all these things have really helped increase our, our graduation rate. And um, so I think that's uh, that's about it. I thank you for your time, and hopefully um, if anybody would love to come to East Boston High School to visit us, you know, more than welcome. Our doors are always open. And we'd love to have you.
I can testament, I give a testimony to the wonderful welcome that you do at East Boston High School. I wanted to thank you, Phil, for um, all your incredible hard work over there in East Boston and all the good work you do for students, you and your teachers. So kudos to you and your team.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, um, Mr. Ranjaforte, for sharing um, some of the work behind the data. Um, so on this slide, I also wanted to highlight some of the changes that we see by major student group. Um, so the cells that you see highlighted in green and pink um, meet the DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education um, definition of significant change within the state accountability system. Um, so these are changes that they deem to be um, significant in terms of progress towards targets. Four of our major student groups had an increase in their graduation rate that was larger than the all-students change. Um, specifically our female students, economically disadvantaged students, our Black students, and Latinx students. Similarly, three groups had a decrease in their dropout rate that was larger than the all-students decrease. Our female students, English learners, and Latinx students. Next slide, please. Um, so focusing back on the draft school committee goal, um, it is written around the percentage of graduates who meet the citywide definition of college career and life readiness. This is a review of um, some of what we talked about last week, but this is measured by meeting um, two of three criteria. Ninety-four percent attendance or higher, GPA of two-point-seven or higher, and engagement with rigorous coursework, specifically completion of Mass Core and enrollment in advanced coursework. Students need to meet two of those three as well as the completion of anywhere, anytime learning, which is measured by internships and other extracurricular activities. These measures were externally validated through a research study conducted by Robert Baufans in twenty nineteen, which is linked on the slide, if you would like to read more. I also want to highlight the table on the right um, which shows the percentage of students meeting each component. Um, one of the questions last week was around um, the percentage of students completing Mass Core versus enrolled in advanced coursework. Um, so we have showed those two metrics separately. Um, and you'll see that the percentage of graduates completing Mass Core is the lowest of the indicators included in this definition. Next slide. This slide shows um, a two-year comparison, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty um, by a major student group of graduates meeting this definition. So while we see that the graduation rate has increased, we are seeing the percentage of graduates meeting the CCLR definition has decreased by one-point-five percentage points. Most major student groups also saw a decrease, with the exception of Latinx students and English learners, who both saw a one-year increase. We are continuing to conduct analysis to better understand what is driving these trends. But our initial analysis shows Mass Core completion as the indicator with the lowest percentage, as we highlighted on the previous slide. And I will now pass the presentation to Chief Academic Officer Andrea Azias to share more about Mass Core.
Thanks so much, Monica. In the next few slides, we will describe key aspects of the recommended policy that you have in your committee packet, including the fact base around Mass Core as a factor of college career and life readiness. And the district-wide flexibilities and practices that, when systematized, will allow for all of our students to reach this bar of preparation. Mass Core, as you know, is the recommended program of study Massachusetts high school students need to excel in college, career, and civic life, developed by a statewide advisory group. Courses included in Mass Core are rigorous, engaging, and based on appropriate learning standards for high school and beyond. To be clear, it is not a curriculum and does not remove educator creativity. Rather, it provides a framework for the base number of units of study by content area required for graduation. Fulfilling Mass Core is just one measure of college career and life readiness, as you saw in previous slides, which we believe every student, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, disability, sexual orientation, religion, citizenship status, socioeconomic status, or zip code deserves, given that it is strongly predictive of post-secondary enrollment and success leading to entrance into the middle class and closing of opportunity and wealth gaps in our city. Historically, Black and Latinx students, English learners, and students with disabilities have been excluded from access to more rigorous coursework. This policy affirms the district's anti-racist commitment to providing a rigorous and equitable learning environment for all of our students, regardless of the school in which they are enrolled. Making Mass Core the district-wide graduation requirement for all of our students is an anti-racist move and can hold the district and all of our schools accountable to creating access and opportunity for all of our students. Headlines of the, of the proposed policy, as noted here, we recommend that this coming school year be used as a planning year to carefully plan for implementation of the Mass Core policy, including the systems that need to be in place, the additional funding that schools will need, and the technical and adaptive work that needs to be done. We aim to create transparency and clarity for families about district-wide graduation expectations. Eliminating opportunity gaps and affirming our students' infinite capacity to realize their hopes and dreams is central to the district's mission of ensuring that every child in every classroom, in every school, gets what they need. Mass Core is an avenue to advance access to rigorous coursework and college career and life preparation across the board for all of our students. Our inability historically to guarantee Our inability historically to guarantee to our students and their families a life of opportunities has not only to do with rigorous coursework. But in fact, and of course, it has to do with our legacy of racism and structural inequity. Inequitable outcomes, as we see them across the board, are not a factor of the capacity or inability of our students. But rather, they're an expression of our district's racist policies. And in this case, the lack of a district-wide graduation policy. So our recommendation tonight is to adopt the Mass Core policy as our district-wide graduation requirement. Which systematizes many of the supports that work for our students, which you, some of which you heard about this evening already from head of school Branca Forte. While holding the bar high for all of our students. I'll now turn it to my colleague, Assistant Superintendent for Academics and Professional Learning, Christine Landry, to share our fact base.
Thank you and good evening. And you can go to the next slide, please. So Dr. Casselius and Mizaius have laid out how adopting Mass Core can and must be an equity move for the district. We will discuss the systemic technical changes around course coding and waivers that will be critical to appropriately credit our students in alignment with Mass Core expectations. We'll also speak to the need to leverage this opportunity to evaluate the rigor of our coursework. To ensure that all of our students have consistent access to learning experiences that prepare them for life after high school. As our school leaders show tonight, many of those innovative answers already exist in the district. Next slide, please. Our current Mass Core data is sobering. It speaks to both ways in which we, as a district, need to improve how our internal systems speak to each other. As well as deeper work that is needed to raise the bar for instruction and increase access. With a discrepancy between graduation rates and Mass Core completion rates above that of all students for our Black, Asian, economically disadvantaged, English learners and Latinx students. Next slide. The percent of graduates who met Mass Core requirements across the state show much higher rates overall, but similar discrepancies to those that we have in the district. However, there are bright spots across the state that we can learn from. Including Lawrence, Chelsea, and others who have consistently high completion rates across all student groups. We have engaged in some outreach with neighboring districts around best practices already. And will continue to do so during the planning year ahead. Next slide. So there are five buckets of work that we will address in the planning year in alignment with school leader feedback that we've received. The first one is developing and implementing an equitable process for review of each school's budget and schedule to determine where additional dollars will be spent to support Mass Core implementation. Secondly, creating a waiver process to support the acceleration of students who are overage and undercredited. Third, we'll plan to remove barriers for students who have additional courses by virtue of their English language learner status or disability. Also, we'll leverage this opportunity to do more than make a technical change. But as a way to increase the rigor and relevance of our courses. In the next several slides, we'll talk about each area of work in greater detail. And I'll turn it over to our finance team to talk about budgeting. Apologize, our next speaker may not be here with us right now, so let me talk about this one. So again, as I mentioned, the first bucket is around funding. And we want to ensure that we do an individual review of each school's budget. The schedule and the staffing plan with the finance team. And also in partnership with Mass Insight, who will be entering into an engagement with this spring and next year to support our work in creating a framework for review. We'll use community resources when necessary, being creative and thinking about physical education and art spaces. Where those are often the places where schools struggle the most to meet Mass Core requirements. We're also going to determine where additional funding needs to be allocated. And we have been in conversation with Dr. Casselius and the finance team about the possibility of additional funding. And as Dr. Casselius has said, we will be, we'll have a number soon about what we might have to work with. That will be in the range of five to ten million dollars is what we're estimating right now. And I will turn it over to Doctors Dimitzias to talk about off-track use.
Thank you so much, Ms. Landry. So as Ms. Landry was just sharing, we, over the next planning year, will be developing waivers that address accelerated and innovative pathways to graduation. Like that which we heard called the FACS program in East Boston and others that are employed across the district at Excel and other schools. That will be critical drivers for supporting our overaged and undercredited students in meeting the Mass Core graduation requirements. Our alternative ed settings really don't have the luxury of four years of coursework with students. And it's most likely that we have closer to two years. In that timeframe, we need to be realistic, innovative, and asset-based to ensure that our students can meet the Mass Core requirements through competency-based grading and crediting processes. Next slide. We also talked about and continue to develop strategies to support our English learners. Part of being a culturally and linguistically sustaining school district is that we see students' home languages as assets in both word and deed. To support our multilingual learners in meeting Mass Core requirements. We will create a competency determination process for students to receive credit for language proficiency. Many districts use the AP assessment or the stamp assessment, which is already used in the district for the seal of biliteracy as the basis for this designation. And we will weigh out both options, along with others, to create an equitable and systematic approach. Current efforts by the Office of World Languages and English Learners are underway to extend our seal of biliteracy. Hundred and forty, fifty-four students earned this prestige last year. We just administered one round of stamp assessments last week. And access to AP language courses in students' home languages earlier in their high school career are supporting this ongoing work. Next slide. Similarly, we're investigating and exploring strategies that will need to be in place to support students with special needs, including more inclusive opportunities to expand access to Mass Core. This benefit is factored into the inclusion work that's currently being led in partnership with our finance team by the Office of Special Education. We're also looking at project-based and interdisciplinary learning opportunities that increasing engagement and opportunities to accelerate the accumulation of credits and create greater access. I'll now turn it back to Christine to talk us through our timeline for implementation.
Great, thank you. So with approval, we will begin an initial five-year implementation plan for Mass Core. Early steps will include a thorough review of the course catalog, continued engagement with the community. As well, we'll begin an engagement with Mass Insight, as I mentioned before. This spring, to, along with the finance team and school leaders, to create an equitable framework with which to review individual school schedules and staffing. So that we can make determinations for investments for the following year. The first Mass Core cohort will start in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I'll now turn it over to my colleague, Marcia Ennis Mitchell, to talk about advanced coursework. Which is another component of college career and life readiness.
Thank you so much, Ms. Landry. Under the DSE Accountability System, successful completion of advanced courses include but are not limited to Advanced Placement, International Baccalaureate, Project Lead the Way, Dual Enrollment, as well as Chapter Seventy-four approved vocational and technical programs. And these are all really part of the state's very robust, "every student succeeds" plan. The data that you see here is from our school year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, where we saw close to six in ten students in grades eleven and twelve completing an advanced course. And as you can see, four subgroups that were tinkering around a fifty percent completion rate for advanced courses. Our Black students, our Latinx, our males, and our economically disadvantaged students. We also see lower rates of completion for our English learners, as well as our students with disabilities. In addition to reviewing past year's data, we also keep a very close eye on the advanced course enrollment throughout each academic year. And as of March seventeenth of this year, we had approximately two thousand nine hundred and seventy-two students enrolled in Advanced Placement. Around two hundred and eighty-eight students in IB courses. And three hundred and thirty-five students in dual enrollment. And while we continue to open access, positioning our students for success holds equal weight. And under the current administration, there has been a renewed focus and energy on the vertical alignment of courses. For example, pre-AP, as you know, is a core strategy that BPS is launching to enhance skills our students already bring to their AP courses. It occurs before the student even enters the actual AP course. And supports in the continued building up of the knowledge and skills and concepts needed to engage in higher level of learning. Pre-AP curricular strategies are vertically aligned to the actual AP course. And this year, Boston Public Schools, through the Office of Secondary Schools, has been contracting with the College Board to bring training to teachers in an effort to launch integrated pre-AP activities and lessons as a school-wide initiative in grades nine through ten. These strategies will be implemented in classrooms where our English learners and our students with disabilities sit in an effort to begin building their identities and allow them to understand the assets they bring too. Are also positioning them to succeed in these courses. We also know that AP STEM access has been a challenge in our non-exam schools. And sometimes it's really just about a school not having the teaching capacity or enough students to fill a course. And recently, we are excited that DSE launched a new initiative to expand access to seven AP STEM courses in high schools where low numbers of students engage in AP STEM. Despite having the skills to participate and succeed in these courses. And so with this support, students across eighteen BPS high schools that were identified by DSE will have access to a full-year course taught by an expert teacher virtually. And there will be embedded structures at both the school level and the district level to assist them with taking full advantage of this course experience. This is a capacity-building initiative over a five-year period. And is, there is no cost to the school, no cost to the student or the family. And all the books, materials and supplies, as well as the AP exam costs will be covered by DSE for each student enroll. And while AP courses continue to be seen as the default option for BPS students to access a rigorous course experience. More dual enrollment partnerships with our colleges are emerging each year. We have been embedding dual enrollment opportunities as part of several career pathway experiences. So it does not have to feel disconnected from a student's course plan. There are options during the evenings, options through our community-based organizations on college campuses or our high schools for students to take the actual college class. For example, for many years, we've been hosting about six or seven Bunker Hill Community College courses right at Madison Park as a central location where all of our students district-wide can access a course in the evening hours. We are now examining strategies to make dual enrollment more accessible. As well as attractive to our English learners, such as brokering ESL courses offered at the college as an on-ramp to dual enrollment. Offering ethnic studies courses developed by our universities. And seeing where there might be opportunities for our young people to take a dual enrollment course in their home language. For our males, one of our four-year public institutions has raised their hands to, to think with us and engage with us in some planning around what an all-male course opportunity for dual enrollment would look like. In partnership with their on-campus My Brothers Keeper initiative. So we're pretty excited about that and thinking through that. We also have structured early college pathways at three of our high schools, Charlestown, Madison Park, and Dearborn STEM. Where our students are positioned to take four college courses equalling about twelve credits by the time they graduate. Which really gives them a great head start to college degree attainment. And DSE has a designation process to certify a school's early college pathway. And there are additional schools that are developing their plans and they're in the pipeline to submit a proposal this year. So we're also excited about that. So lastly, in this area, BPS continues to support two international baccalaureate programs at Quincy Upper and Stonen and International. This program and the certificate earned through the course experience are recognized across the globe, as you know. And these two schools are also launching the IB career-related program. Designed to engage students in career-focused learning. Leading to further higher education, apprenticeships, and other employment opportunities. Additional high school beyond the Quincy and the Snowden will also be engaging in this coming spring, fall, and summer in IB-related middle-years professional development as an on-ramp to IB. Or just to really build the critical thinking skills and engage students in their academic experience in a deeper way. So some of these are seen as pre-strat- pre-strategies to deepen the academic experience of our young people. And at this time, I will hand it over to our secondary school superintendents, Dr. McIntyre and Dr. Brueggemann, to provide an update on course grades.
Next slide, please. The pandemic has challenged students nationwide in the area of chronic absenteeism, grading, and college applications and acceptance. In this data, we can see that our students have experienced many of the same challenges as their peers. Particularly, in this slide, we can observe the grading challenges that brought on by this pandemic. I want to just point out, on the left side, for course failure rate for core subject areas for our grade six to twelve, notice how quarter one at the top and quarter two, ELA and social studies seem to be at a higher levels of failure than math and science across our secondary schools. And on the right side, for the percentage of students failing one or more course for grade six to twelve for our secondary schools, we also can see that the multi-race, the change in that of nine percent for quarter one and the ten point eight percent change for quarter two is also something that is giving us a challenge. We do need to disseminate the data farther to see what is creating this high percentage for our multigrais students. Now, I have the pleasure and the honor of introducing three of our head schools at some of our high schools to talk about strategies in other schools to support our classrooms, our teachers, our students in order to tackle the course failures. First, I have the pleasure of introducing Head of School at English, Ms. Caitlin Murphy, who will be followed by Dr. Renee McCall, Head of School at Excel, and also Mr. Andrew Manning, who oversees the Accelerated Intervention Program.
Thank you. My name is Caitlin Murphy, and I have the great privilege to serve as Head of School for English High School, where I was a teacher and assistant principal for ten years before becoming the school leader three years ago. I am grateful to Dr. Casselius, Dr. Brueggemann, Dr. McIntyre, and the Central Office Team for asking me to present today on behalf of the English High School community. Over the last six years, English has seen our graduation rate increase nearly thirty percentage points from fifty-two point three percent in two thousand and fifteen to eighty-one point eight percent in two thousand and twenty. Last year, we exceeded the district's average graduation rate with a four point nine percent increase, a point of particular pride for our dedicated faculty and staff as we celebrate our two-hundredth anniversary as a school later this year. Those data points are reflective of the turnaround and transformation strategies we have put in place, strategies that have proved both effective and sustainable and ones which we believe will position us for continued improvement in the years ahead and which will continue to support our students in meeting their goals for post-secondary success. Like most schools in our situation, there are a myriad of challenges we face and methods we use to support our students. I want to mention just a few of those strategies in the limited time I have before you, strategies that are specifically helpful in supporting our English language learners, our students with disabilities, and our overage and undercredited students. Three years ago, we started a program we call PI Period for Partners in Education, which is an intervention and enrichment block we added to our master schedule. This period is flexibly scheduled each week, allowing students to meet with any teacher or counselor for support and additional skill development. All students have a PI advisor who meets with them on Monday, and together, they plan the student's schedule for that period for the rest of the week. Any students with an average of seventy percent or below are automatically required to meet with those teachers in those classes to get additional support. Additionally, we offer supportive groups and one-on-one counseling during this period, as well as a host of student- and faculty-led enrichment activities ranging from the traditional student government and yearbook meetings to a student-initiated anime club and a speaker series from local members of Divine Nine fraternities and sororities as part of our efforts to increase student awareness and enrollment in historically black colleges and universities. Additionally, to provide support to students who may be slipping off track academically, each week, our faculty and staff convene for our EWI, or Early Warning Indicator, meetings. We review any students who are off track in course performance and work to identify academic interventions that can be put in place in the classroom to support and engage students. These meetings are designed to approach student academic support from an asset-based perspective, focusing on a student's strengths and interests as the starting point for next steps. This process is complementary to our Student Success Team meetings, where our social workers, deans of cultures, guidance, and health services staff gather to consider interventions to support the physical and social-emotional supports that our students and families may need. Both of these meetings have been enhanced this year by the introduction of the Panorama System, which allows us to create, share, and track intervention teams, intervention plans across teams, so that any adult that is working with a student can see what all of the other adults are working with that student on. We have changed our master's schedule to run two semesters, which allows us to offer more electives and to develop semester-long, theme-based ELA courses that more closely resemble the kinds of courses students will engage with in college and courses that are in line with our goal to become a more anti-racist school community by providing both windows and mirrors for students throughout our curriculum. Some examples of the courses are Voices of Migration, The Hero's Journey, The Legacy of the American Dream, Exploring Feminism, African-American Literature and Literature and Racial Justice. These courses are similar in concept and design to the English Language Art courses that many independent schools in the area offer to high school students, and we felt that it was important to offer a similar experience and choice to our students. Sorry, I know I'm going fast. Our teachers have spent significant time working to revise our curriculum to inspire and engage our students. We ask our teachers to consider and to begin with this question: What is begging to be taught in your field? What inspires your own interest in your subject area? These questions guide our instructional practices and help to engage our students in deeper learning experiences. To support our English language learners, we have partnered with researchers at Harvard School of Education to develop and implement native language literacy assessments and a Spanish-language literacy intervention course that we offer during our PI period. This has complemented our instructional interim benchmark assessments and has empowered our teachers to take a strong inquiry stance to their work with students. We have also made investments in the arts and are proud to now offer band, wind ensemble, music production, studio art, graphic design, dance, and theater for our students. We also have a fantastic step team led by our Assistant Head of School. As we know that engaging students and helping them to find their passion is a key part of our work, and this year, that engagement has been more important than ever. Finally, to address the needs of the many students that we work with who are overage and undercredited, we have created a full-time credit recovery program, which I am proud to note is led by an English high graduate in the class of two thousand and thirteen, who is able to act as a mentor and an advisor to students and is also able to share his experiences as a graduate of UMass Dartmouth. The progress we are making at English is attributable to striking a balance between a deep focus on data-driven strategies and the cultivation of meaningful and authentic relationships with our students. We are grateful for the support of the Central Office.
Did she freeze, or is that me?
I think she's frozen.
Okay, I think she was getting ready to end, because she was giving thanks. So we just can move on, and then if Caitlin comes back on, we can thank her for her participation. She's done incredible work over there at English, and we're super proud of her and her entire team.
Next, we will have Dr. Renee McCall and Mr. Andrew Manning.
Thank you, Dr. Brueggemann, and I would just like to extend my congratulations to Caitlin on her success, as well as to Phil and the East Boston community for their continued progress. And I'm thankful this evening for everyone to have this opportunity to highlight some of the impactful work that we are engaging in at Excel High School. The Accelerated Intervention Program, or AIP, joined our school community just three years ago. And it is our in-house alternative pathway to graduation for some of our students who are overage and undercredited. The AIP team of four teachers and an administrator, who you'll hear from shortly, became an integral part of our school community by implementing a layered approach to outreach, communication, and relationship building with key stakeholders. Over the years, we have adapted the program and adjusted our student profile to meet existing needs and ever-changing needs of our school community. As a result, we have experienced an increase in attendance and graduation rates, as well as overall student perseverance. We believe our success is dual-pronged, with an emphasis on both teacher and student strategies and support. In terms of teacher strategies, our AIP teachers not only teach credit recovery courses, but they also teach a mainstream course with students who are not a part of the AIP program. And in this way, they are committed to building relationships again with all students. The teachers in AIP also attend common planning time with their content-specific teams in order to engage in ongoing discussions around excellent instruction criteria, student progress monitoring, as well as a discussion around early warning indicators. They also attend weekly PD sessions with the broader Excel community so that we can have conversations that are aligned with school-based expectations, as well as the overall vision of success. A member of our guidance team is assigned to the AIP group of students and teachers to provide targeted, actionable feedback and support, including preparation for the process of college and career readiness portfolios. At this time, I'd like to hand it over to Andrew Manning, the Program Director of AIP, to further discuss student-level strategy.
Thank you, Dr. McCall, and thank you for having us and inviting us to be part of this meeting tonight. The goal of this collaboration between the AIP and Excel High School is to provide equitable access to learning for all students by creating a climate and culture that re-engages students through teacher-led mentoring and family engagement. I want to acknowledge that although I've been asked to speak tonight, the real work is done by the incredible teachers of the AIP and Excel High School, as well, and of course, by our students, who cease to amaze and inspire every day. I want to go over a few key elements to our student success that we have seen over the past few years during this collaboration. The first is students experience fewer transitions by remaining in school with access to existing support staff that have developed relationships and trust. We have unique, individualized student interventions that are developed by the team and aim to support the whole student, academic, social-emotional wellness, and post-secondary planning to ensure success. All AIP students are assigned a graduation coach to track progress, address concerns, and coordinate with families to ensure all needs are being met. Flexible scheduling allows disengaged students to focus on building stamina and balance school with outside obligations, such as work and family. Small class sizes give students opportunities to work closely with their teachers, allowing teachers to assess and build individual student skills and adjust their practice to meet student needs. Blended learning, using in-class, online, Twilight, guided independent study, and summer school to maximize ed options for all learners. We operate on a semester schedule, which allows for students to maximize their course load and to fit their needs and build stamina. All of our students participate in an SEL class in partnership with Boston After School and Beyond as a requirement for all students. And I'll hand it back to Dr. McCall to bring in our next part.
Andrew, thank you for outlining those strategies that we've employed for students. And we would also like to detail the additional interventions created in collaboration between Excel High School and AIP this year in response to the learning needs of our students during this time of the pandemic.
Each year, the AIP has adapted to meet the needs of the Excel community. This year, in response to the pandemic, we intentionally kept seats open to allow us to pivot as student needs became more evident due to the pandemic. We all know that the pandemic will not end when we welcome students back to our buildings. In many ways, the hardest work lies ahead. These are some examples of interventions we have developed this year and look forward to continuing to work in collaboration next year to ensure all students' needs are being met. The first intervention that we developed this year to address the needs of students because of the pandemic was to create a senior success program, a mentoring program for Tier Two seniors struggling to see a clear path to graduation. They receive a school-based mentor that provides comprehensive case management to ensure students are supported and feel confident in their post-secondary plan. The second intervention we developed is After School Academy, which is a project-based portfolio class offering math, ELA, and social-emotional learning. It's held after school and targets tenth and eleventh graders who have struggled to find success during this pandemic. Lastly, we host Acceleration Academies, a four-day project-based a four-day, project-based academic and social-emotional learning opportunity for students, targeting both students interested in staying engaged over vacation and supporting those students who need help re-engaging in their learning. These are some of the examples of the work we've been doing. And I would be happy to discuss in more detail with anybody that would like to hear. But for now, I'm going to pass it back to Dr. McCall.
Thank you, Andrew. And I will just conclude with that we are looking forward to our continued partnership with AIP, again, as we continue to refine our expansion of alternative pathways to graduation for our students at Excel. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee and Andrew. Just wonderful work that you're doing at Excel. And thank you for ensuring our students get what they need. So proud of you all.
Next slide, please. And next slide, please. Thank you. So very quickly, we have suspended the use of no-credit as we discovered it was a racialized policy affecting disproportionately our Black, Brown, and Latinx students. Many of our schools have already eradicated the no-credit from their registrar. However, we have three schools left, and they are working diligently to exclude the term "no-credit" on a child's transcript. We are practicing doing no harm to all of our students. And rather than failing them, we're using incomplete as markers or placement holders that allow students additional time and opportunity to make up any miswork due to the disproportionate effect of the pandemic on many of our diverse learners. Next slide, please. Very quickly, you've heard a lot about Panorama from many of our speakers, our school leaders. And it's just a wonderful opportunity that we've engaged to unify a system of support that allows us access to what each and every child is doing within his or her school community and how we collectively can support their growth or celebrate their success. Next slide, please. I will now turn this over to Marsha, who will talk to you about MYCAP and post-secondary readiness.
Thank you so much, Dr. McIntyre. The next couple of slides will highlight key initiatives underway, many of them relying on our deepening partnerships with DESI, community-based agencies, local foundations, higher education institutions, as well as collaboration across several Boston public school departments. I'm confident that we are all in agreement that having a plan for anything in life makes a world of difference. But what does that process need to entail when your life's outcomes are depending on that plan? So as a process, a student's my-career and academic-plan journey begins with a simple question: who am I? But maybe not so simple. And how does the understanding of my current self connect to my future aspirations and the world of work? So this self-discovery process cuts across three domains: personal, social, career development, and academic and college and career planning. The framework for MYCAP came about as a means to activate the state's definition of college and career readiness. And it uses targeted curricula, structured lessons, and aligned tasks that are flexible enough to be implemented in the classroom structure, out-of-school time programs, or through personalized advising sessions. It calls for students to really take the lead in their planning process, but it also requires a partnership with a caring adult, who can be a teacher, a school counselor, advisor, or another member of the school community. This planning process is iterative, so it's multi-year in nature. And BPS has developed a scope and sequence of experiences and milestones. And we're building up those milestones, and we'll be sharing them with the superintendent to just, you know, bless them and say, these are the milestones we feel are the bare minimum for our students to engage in in order to move towards having a sound post-secondary plan. And some of these milestones will include building up a resume over time, engaging in job shadows, internships, or other career explorations, completing a strengths explorer assessment, building college lists, submitting post-secondary and scholarship applications, financial literacy. These are some of the things that we're talking about. But some of them are already embedded in the current MYCAP plan. We currently use Navya's College and Career Planning Platform as the instrument for students to complete activities and maintain their e-portfolio until they graduate. Every student in BPS grades nine through 12 has a Navya's account that is synced with the BPS Student Information Management System, allowing the account to move with them between schools if they transition. Collaboration is a vital component of the MYCAP implementation across schools. And we could not do this without the leadership of our school counselors in each and every one of our school buildings. But we know that this should not just be their charge, that it should include an ecosystem of supports that our students can rely on to engage with them in this journey. We have an RFP process underway to secure the instrument for MYCAP this year. And when that is complete, every parent and guardian will have an account so they too can partner with us and their child in this process. This year, we have collaborated with the Boston Opportunity Agenda and Success Boston to deepen MYCAP by launching the Generation Success Challenge for the class of 2024 with a clear message: you started your high school career in the pandemic, and you will finish strong with a solid plan. And we will be there with an in-person graduation to celebrate with you. But this planning needs to begin at the onset of high school. We consider students who have started their MYCAP journey when they complete three activities in the ninth grade: a career cluster finder, a learning styles inventory, and setting an academic SMART goal. Schools can track their progress either in Navya's or through the dashboard seen here. To date, about one in four ninth graders have completed the career cluster finder activity, and about one in five ninth graders have completed the learning styles inventory and academic SMART goals. As part of the district's Return, Recovery, and Reimagine Plan, the Office of Equity, Strategy, and Opportunity and Achievement Apps designed a transformative mentoring model to implement the MYCAP experience in the middle grades with a deep focus on social-emotional learning and CLSP practices, culturally-linguistically-sustaining practices. Partners such as Ed Vestas and Sociedad Latina have helped us develop supplemental interactive lessons for MYCAP. Mass Mentors, Cassel, Boston University, and the Thompson's Island Outward Bound Education Center have been instrumental in deepening models and developing training for the transformative mentoring initiative. We look forward to creating an aligned success planning structure and system between grades six and 12. And excited that we have MYCAP as a framework to guide our efforts as we work with our schools to activate the system to implement. And with that, I will hand it over to our Director of Guidance, Ms. Catherine Chu, to talk about a few additional initiatives underway.
Thank you, Marsha. You can see on this slide that we are engaged also in the college and career readiness testing with the SAT Initiative. And so our district has offered and paid for the PSAT for over a decade. In the last couple of years, we've rolled out an initiative to do SAT testing during the school day. We've done this because it increases access so that students do not have to find a Saturday testing location. So in December of 2019, the district made plans to increase the equity and access to college admissions, and we offered to pay for the SAT in the school day during the spring of the junior year. This is an increase in the investment from the PSAT. Due to the COVID pandemic that happened in spring of 2020, the juniors did not get to take the SAT School Day. We provided the opportunity for the students in this cohort to take it in October of their senior year. A few of the schools were able to get this completed before the mid-October surge, which caused Boston Public Schools to go all remote. In total, in October, 894 seniors participated in SAT School Day. For FY 2022, our high schools are offered their juniors the opportunity once again to participate in SAT School Day. Schools have chosen among the dates of March 24th, April 13th, and April 27th as the test dates. So earlier today, five schools that had chosen March 24th did implement SAT in the school day. And it was an option for the students who wanted to come in and take it. We'll have more schools doing it on the 13th as well as the 27th. SAT in the school day will continue to be administered to the 11th-grade students in the spring of each year, and this is an ongoing investment. We believe this is an important opportunity to offer our students, although the role of standardized college admissions testing is being evaluated in light of the COVID pandemic. A number of colleges have already chosen to go test optional prior to the pandemic. Because of the pandemic and because of all of the cancellations of the Saturday National Test Administrations, most colleges suspended their admissions test requirements for one to two years with the decision to reevaluate. So for example, our seniors in the class of 2021, many of them applied to college without choosing to send in scores if they had it. It was not required. The district will monitor the developments and make recommendations accordingly. In addition to offering equity and access, our students have access to the College Board Khan Academy accounts for personalized SAT practice. We've also deepened our relationships with partner organizations such as Let's Get Ready, which provides SAT preparation and college advising for our students. The district will also be continuing the investments in the administration of the PSAT for 10th and 11th graders. And again, we will continue to monitor the landscape of college admissions testing. I will, Marsha and I will talk about our next initiative, which is the FAFSA completion project. Could you go to the next slide, please? The completion rate for our class of 2020 seniors last year was 49% overall. BPS has set a goal this year for 60% of the class of 2021 cohort. As you can see from the chart, we're currently at 41%. And we have launched a cross-sector effort to provide personalized support to families in our more marginalized subgroups. What are our strategies? We will, as a part of this, we know that completing the FAFSA is a key indicator of students entering college in the fall after their high school graduation. The data tells us that 90% of the students who complete FAFSA, the free application for federal student aid, by March 15th usually matriculate to college by the fall of high school graduation. Using the FAFSA completion data reports from the state, we share student-level information with partner agencies that have non-disclosure agreements with BPS, such as USpire, MassEdCo, and the College Advising Core, and summary school-level data across our partner community. All of our school counselors receive their student-level data for their high school. We have done two mailings to our Boston Public School senior families in January of 2021 as well as March of 2021. In January 2021, we focused on encouraging all students and families to complete the FAFSA. And in the March 2021 mailing that just went out, we included information about the Mayor's Tuition-Free Community College Program, along with the links to all of the flyers translated in the eight languages of the Boston Public Schools. This all-hands-on-deck approach this year with DESI and the state supporting us through a $45,000 grant we just received, we will be able to offer evening as well as weekend application sessions, expand access to bilingual advisors, and deepen our parent and community grassroots efforts. We will also be using some of this grant funding to advertise in community newspapers as well as social media platforms. Completing the FAFSA using a virtual format is a multi-step process, and it requires several meetings with each families. Given the COVID pandemic, this is also a sensitive process for each of our five families. Our partners in our school counselors are ensuring, are working to ensure that every eligible student has a completed FAFSA and can check off the step in their post-secondary planning. I will now turn this back to the team.
Is there one more slide, team? Or are we at the end of the presentation, Catherine? I thought there was one more slide.
I thought it was just the appendix slide.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, thank you to the entire team for this presentation. I know Caitlin's got her camera back on. She feels bad that it went down, but don't worry about that, Caitlin. We just gave you a lot of kudos and thanks for your presentation and for the good work that you're doing there at the English. We're super proud of you.
Thank you so much.
And I'll throw it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent. And thank you to all the school leaders. I know you have to work in the morning, and you're here with us at this hour. So I just want to say thank you in advance. And your presentations are very interesting, very innovative. So I commend you on all the amazing work. I will open it now for questions to the presentation. I just want to remind everyone of our agreed-upon norms that we would each have five minutes of questions. And if you have more questions, we can do a second round. And then I also want to remind all the staff, if you can be brief in your responses as well. So I see that Dr. Rivera is raring to go. So, Dr. Rivera, take it away.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for your presentations and the amazing work.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for your presentations and the amazing work. It was a lot of information and I will probably have other questions, but what's really, you know, standing out to me is that, you know, we're going to be changing the graduation requirements and how important a decision that is going to be in adopting the Mass Core as a graduation requirement. My main concern is have we, you know, all of these are plans, you know, to implement. And honestly, I'd feel more comfortable if there was, the plan was, was more, you know, developed to be able to, to make a decision about the impact of adopting the Mass Core as a graduation requirement and dropout rates. So yeah, if there's a way that we could get some kind of visual map where we can see which schools are already meeting those three criteria so that we can get some kind of, you know, prediction or estimation about whether there will be any impact on dropout rates. So that's my, that's my main concern about adopting Mass Core. Is that going to increase our dropout rates?
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. We are going to take the next year to plan, and we will bring forward the work plan when we bring forward it for a vote. So we're hoping that work will be brought forward sometime in April. If, if the Chair will agree to put it on the agenda. And so we'll have the work plan. We will have heads of school speak to it, and we can certainly have the data that you've requested at that time be presented as well.
Okay. Ms. Robinson?
Yes, thank you. The first thing I want to say is that I'm overwhelmed. As an early childhood person, there was a lot of good learning for me in this thinking about, you know, how are we supporting our young people? And so my takeaways from this is that there will be lots of options for access that every student will find critical ways of accessing coursework, et cetera. And there'll be a lot of individualized opportunity. But I guess the biggest question I have, because I think too, as we look at our graduation rates and then our success or prep, you know, or readiness for college-level work and success in it post-graduation, how do we work around the rigor of all of these course offerings over all of these schools? And, you know, what are the skills students really going to need to be successful in college? And then I guess lastly, it's the difference, what, what's the pros and cons of IB versus Mass Core? And, and what kind of curriculum, for example, do our exam schools have now? Where do they fall in that Mass Core or IB realm? To understand what do we have now as examples versus what we're, we're trying to provide for all of our students?
Ms. Zayas or Ms. Landry want to speak to the rigor in the programming and the difference between, you know, a Snowden school, for instance, who has International Baccalaureate and the Quincy School. Those two have International Baccalaureate, too. Advanced placement courses that are available at our exam schools. And also they have a classical approach as well. So what's the differences between that or going to Boston Green Academy, for instance?
Yeah. And the Arts Academy.
Yes, so you have. Mass Core is more of an infrastructure, Ms. Robinson, of the different course-taking you may have. So you may have a course, courses that embed the state standards in chemistry, for instance. But at Boston Green Academy, they may look at a botanical chemistry, you know, and there may be some different aspects to the International Baccalaureate program in the high standard and, and the standard classes of IB. And so there's different ways to take it, but the Mass Core is really kind of the underlying framework. I'm trying to find easy ways to describe it. And, and that would be what's across all schools. But then schools that have a special focus like the classics or the arts or the environmental sciences would then maybe have a different flair to that course. Or at Madison Park, you may be able to get that through some sort of vocational experience and, and show competency in that standard. It's really getting at the level of the standard and the competency within a course. But Christine, I don't know if, or Ms. Zayas, do you want to expand on what I've shared?
I think it's, I would just say that, and I'll turn it over to Christine in just a minute, that it's, yes, important to just think about Mass Core as being the overall framework for graduation, which is, it just sets the, the bar for all of our students. And then above and beyond that, depending on the school's particular focus, you may have AP courses and we'd, we'd want for all of our students to have access to different types of advanced rigorous coursework, whether it be AP or an international baccalaureate program, the types of dual enrollment programs that you heard Ms. Ines Mitchell describe this evening, and other types of flexibly available online and other programs. Some of that is available right now in some of our schools. And with the Mass Core requirement, what we'd like to advance is having a base guarantee of rigor across the board.
I think that's exactly right. I would only add that, you know, as Andrea said, it is the base with the first 18 credits of the foundational courses that everyone should have access to, which can look really different. You know, Caitlin talked about at English High School, that English courses are very different and very personalized to the student needs and teacher interests, but they still count as Mass Core English courses for students because they're rigorous. And then there's five additional courses that students take over the course of four years that are electives, but they're, they are Mass Core electives that meet a bar for rigor, too. And that's where a lot of the flexibility would come in for schools and the Boston Greens and other schools that have a special focus might have, you know, more courses that are, that are focused in that way in those five elective courses.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. We'll come back if you have more questions. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Coleman, who I know is just very excited to ask. This is, this is his claim, so.
Well, no, well, pardon me, excuse me, while I gush. This has been one of the, maybe the best presentation I've heard in my time in Boston about the academic focus of the district. From my time on the governing board of English High School through serving the committee, this is the first time I've seen such a comprehensive, across-all-schools approach to saying, how are we going to up our game and address the needs of all our students? I've never heard it as, as fully developed and as thoroughly presented. Starting with the, the challenge of having all these high school graduation requirements. We all know that's part of our incoherence and the struggle that we have. And when we look at the data about graduation, even though we've improved significantly in our graduation rates and, and, and reduction of dropout, when you look at, when you look at school-by-school data, the variability is just way too broad, which speaks to the lack of our inability to have focus in a way that touches multiple schools and drives change in a coherent, useful way and building a, an effective relationship between the central office and our schools, where we know it's in the schools where things happen. And this framework really sets us up to be able to really track and, and, and focus. The other thing that, as you know, the fact is that we have a baseline of data that you've reported on, and it's very clear that we'll be able to track the improvement going forward, which I think will just allow us to stay focused and fit with what the school, the school committee is trying to do, which is saying, what do we want our kids to be able to know and be able to do? What are the metrics? And you, you brilliantly, I think, identified why we're choosing college and career ready scores as one of the goals that we want to be judged by as a school committee. And you've identified how complex that, what, what that means in actual practice and how broadly that measure, what, how broad, what a broad amount of work that measure succeeds. And the thing that I, I was not a fan, as you know, of focusing on Mass Core. And I had a great conversation with Christine McShane, who, who helped me see that by focusing on Mass Core, we're dealing with 48% of our students who are finishing but not being able to go forward. And this presents us with the ability to make a real substantive change in that long-term outcome data. So I, I, I'm, I'm going to be, I'm a convert, all right? You've converted me and I'm very excited, but mostly because you then also articulated what you're going to do about our off-track students. And so taking in the Parthenon Report, which for me has been, you know, when we had 30% of our kids coming in the ninth grade and already failing, you know, how can we not attend to that? And so you've done, I think, what is the most difficult thing? Focus on a high-scope expectation for all our students and a positive post-college planning, and then addressing the needs of our kids who are, are most likely not be able to take advantage of our, our high schools. And so kudos, kudos, kudos. And I, you know, we're going to track the data. This in some ways raises the bar for us all because you're saying, here's a plan. And then, and the fact that you take a year to really develop it and implement it. You can have a plan with clear outcomes that we'll be able to judge our behavior by, disaggregated by our demographic groups. So thank you for this, and I'm very excited to provide whatever support we can. And, and I, and, and the my cap, I actually agree, even though my colleague who developed it, so I am particularly excited about that, to integrate that and our ability to integrate the social-emotional learning. So I'll stop gushing you. This is wonderful. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Mr. Tran?
I believe a member, Diaruto, raised his hand before I do, so.
He did, but I'm giving you an opportunity because you haven't spoken earlier, so please go right ahead. You're very kind, but go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Looking at the, the entire presentation today, for lack of better term, as a matter of fact, using a a comment shared with me by an astute member of our committee, the rate of successfully completing Mass Core in our BPS, contrasted with the state, is eye-opening. And I'm very concerned. While I, I, while I do hear Dr. Coleman regarding the, you know, the, 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 the the fact that Mass Core is, is, is not a measure for student success led in life, I share that. However, in my mind, Mass Core still is somehow a damnation line, a defining line for us to, you know, to make sure, to ensure that students somehow in, in college or after graduation better prepare themselves to move forward. The issues here, I, in, in my mind, looking at the, and for, for lack of another better term, you know, the, the astounding, I, I don't know what to say, the astounding rate of our BPS students in not successfully completing Mass Core. Eye-opening, yes, but sad, unacceptable, in my mind, should be used. One of the reasons I believe that resulted in that is because of our, because of certain ramifications that we have with the union, with schools that, 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 that we agree on with the, the autonomy, with our autonomy, certain legal ramifications, whatever they, they are. It is time for us to really take a look and revisit how do we deal with school autonomy? How do we deal with the union? Despite all these, despite all, all these plans that you, you all are putting on the table to ensure students are successful, led in life, we don't. But at this point, we don't really look at that, at the core issue, the, the core problem. I think we should, we should. In my mind, those core issues is school autonomy. And I'd be very frank, putting it right out there. How do we deal with the union? So please, that's my concern because I have my children's, all my children graduated from Boston Public School and, and they do, they did pretty well. So in, in another word, why all other students cannot do that? Why? Are, are, are we somehow falling behind in our, in our commitment? I hope not. So thank you for sharing the plan, and I, I'll, I'll just make a last statement. It is eye-opening. And to me, that eye-opening will not go away if we don't, if we don't take a serious approach in issues that I just raised, school autonomy, union. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. I, I don't know if you want to respond to anything, Dr. Solius?
Just that I appreciate his perspective. I share also the concern with the inequity across schools. As you know, with even our high graduation rates, which we really are proud of. We had 15 schools that showed increases and we had, I believe it was seven that stayed the same and 13 that went down. So I don't think you can all be blamed on autonomy, but it is, you know, we can put the blame on the fact that we do not have common expectations across all high schools, and that's what this would remedy.
Thank you. I'm going to move on now to Mr. Diarusha.
Thank you. So actually, a little confused after that last comment, but so with respect to the graduation rate, it seems to me that there, there was an acceleration this past year and, and, and the increase, a large increase in the rate. And I, I know it was a pandemic year, but do we, do we understand the factors like what, what went really, really well this past year, it appears? And how do we, you know, isolate that and, and invest more in that? And related to that, Ms. Chu showed the slide on the, on the FAFSA completion. And how, how do I interpret that? Is that, are there less, did less kids in this class apply to college? Did the, did the mix change somehow? If you can help me understand that. And I have another comment. I don't know if I should just pause there, Madam Chair, and go to my other comment or?
Sure, Ms. Ms. Chu, I'm not sure. Do you know what the slide?
Yeah, I can have Ms. Chu speak to the FAFSA slide after I just talk about why I think, and I think Ms. Chu can probably add to why she thinks the graduation rate went up. When we were in a pandemic, we shifted our grading practices. When we were in a pandemic, we shifted our grading practices to be more, I believe, anti-racist, which was to do no harm and allow kids to make up incompletes, and suspended our practice of giving no credits. So students actually had to demonstrate what they knew, and they had time to do that. I think another thing that we did was the competency determination. So they had another way to show competency. And the policy had been shifted, but we took advantage of that policy. And we were able to help students who typically maybe wouldn't have passed the test, show that competency through their course grades. And the team took that on. The ODA team rallied every year, a student can also do an appeal. And so we had several students that had appeals. And that's always been the case, that, that wasn't any change in particular last year. But the team just rallied for each and every kid and documented and worked hard to count for every kid that was credit-ready, to really work that they actually earned their diploma. I don't know, Ms. Chu, if you want to talk a little bit more about the process? Or Ms. Hogan, who also helped rally for some of that as well? So that can, could get through the finish line.
I, I do, I do think that what you had talked about, so what Dr. Cassellius was talking about, the, the modified process. Normally, there's a very restricted schedule on the MCAS retest. And, and the retest happened in May, but it got canceled in June. And so the state, DSC, provided an opportunity for the students to use coursework to demonstrate their proficiency in English, math, or science in lieu of actually taking the test because of the pandemic. And so with that, a few, quite, quite a few more students were able to, I, I think normally, and DSC has some of the details on what they had projected and their typical retest success rate. The, the MCAS is a is an instrument that causes a lot of frustrations for students, not because of the, the standards for the content, but in how limited it is in terms of when a student can do those retests. And so a student who may need two points additional, they have to wait for the science, as an example. They would have to wait all the way till February of the following year to be able to sit for that test again. So that's one example. I think you had another question about FAFSA, so I, I wasn't sure if I caught the whole question.
Yeah, just thank you. Just that, what, what explains that, that low percentage this year? Do, do you?
The lower, what, I think it, it really is the pandemic. And, and if you ask every single one of our frontline staff, the students will even say it, they're just like, I'm so tired of this remote learning isn't really working for me. Some of our students really are working a lot of hours because their parent, guardian, aunt, uncle either got reduced hours or lost their job. And so the students are like, I need to go and try to make up as much as I can. So we, we just have students who we know they're flat out, they're, they're not working for extra money to put in their pocket. They're working for rent. And so part of what we're trying to do with our FAFSA initiative, and we really appreciate the state recognizing, because it's a disparity. If they don't choose to go on to post-secondary, it's gonna perpetuate the disparities that we see in the structural inequities. And so what we hope to do, and we, you know, we engage everyone, so please, we'll be reaching out to all of you, please let me know if you'd like to help. We really want to target the messaging to the parents or the guardians. And to also for them to really give the student permission to say, I know that you've been working and want to work, but I also want you to go to school. So let's figure out, if you don't want to go full-time, there is financial aid to go part-time. And to, to know that, especially with the, the Mayor's Tuition Free Community College Program, if you're Pell Grant eligible, through the building boom that we've had in Boston and the linkage funds, you will get an additional five hundred dollars a year on top of any of your tuition and fees covered as a last dollar scholarship at the six participating institutions. So that's a message we want to get out there. And we want parents and guardians, whether it's grandma or uncle or aunt, to really help the students see, we need to play the long game too. So yes, you work, and you gotta keep thinking about the longer road and what is the career potentials.
So just two, I, I think I'm up to time, but just two, two quick follow-ups on that. So the, the percentage of students that we would have expected to apply to college from this graduating class, is that, is that lower than previous years?
It, it's slight, I, I would say like right now, it, it's pretty much with the FAFSA. So like right now, we're at forty-one percent. We do get a lot more students who apply between now and, and the summer. So it, it's just, they kind of go in waves. And so, so the number will, I, I really do believe the number will go up. Right now, Massachusetts across the board, that's not just our district. There, the FAFSA is down by six percent.
Okay.
And so, so that's why the state has really sort of put in this, like, let us reach out to the fifty high schools that have the largest number of low-income students. Give you guys a little bit of a grant money, and you guys target your interventions. And so we have contracted with MassEdco to provide really outreach, outreach as well as linguistically accessible, because they have FAFSA advisors in Spanish, Cantonese, as well as Mandarin. And, and then we're doing, we're gonna be contracting with more people to help us to broker and connect them. So that, and we're doing phone calls to families, but also the big part is we're gonna do advertising targeted to the families.
Mr. Diaroujo, to answer your question, also about the college-going, I think last year, Boston Public Schools saw eight percent of our students who were less than the previous year going to college. Monica, could you speak to that and what the national average was?
Yeah, I don't have the
I think it was thirty percent.
We did see a decline in Boston, but it was not as high as the decline was seen nationwide of our graduating seniors who enrolled in college in the immediate fall. And so we can pull those numbers up and make sure that you have access to them.
My, my memory says it was thirty-one percent, and we were eight percent, but maybe it was different than that. But if you can find it, that'd be great. Did that answer your question, Mr. Diaroujo?
Yes, on that piece, yes, thank you. And I'll come back with my other, my other one after, thank you.
Great, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and I have to start off, first of all, by pointing out you driving us as chair to focus in more on student outcomes, and the superintendent working with you to do presentations that are designed around student outcomes. And we get a chance to think about the policy implications and the policy steps. This is a big step forward. So I share Dr. Coleman's excitement about this presentation. There's a lot of the meat, a lot of meat on the bone here for us as school committee members to really think about. And what we have identified as one of our top priorities, right? One of our five priorities. And so all of which impact the opportunity achievement gap, right? And so when I look at the graduation rates, and I get encouraged to see a slight closing of the achievement gap in that issue. It is slight, but yeah, and it's one of, you know, many things we'll look at when we think about achievement gap. But I saw some positive steps there. But I share the concerns that have been raised about, you know, in, in my mind, it comes down to the fundamental question, do we feel responsibility for our students pre-K through twelve? But do we feel responsibility for them pre-K through sixteen? Because the research is showing us that we are not setting up our students to succeed. Certainly those who are going on to college. And, you know, MasCor, to me, tho- those numbers that show MasCor of our students versus the statewide average. And admittedly, that's a whole bunch of different districts. But as one of the presenters pointed out tonight, there's some encouraging work going on in Lawrence and a few other gateway cities as well, that show our students can do MasCor work. We have traditionally granted a lot of autonomy to our schools, and there's great reasons for that. And there's a lot of good that comes with autonomy. But I, I support the superintendent's viewpoint that we need a baseline expectation here. And Dr. Rivera, I, I share your concern about, you know, our school's gonna be ready for it. And I think having that slide today saying the five concerns from school leaders, I agree with you, I think a heat map, I think in terms of a heat map, heat map, literally colored-coded, green, no concerns, yellow, here are some concerns, red is a major concern. You know, over the areas of, of all of our high schools, what it will take to get them to MasCor. That's, that could be a quick visual map, to use your phrase, heat map is the way I phrase it, of, of what the issues are and, and how we can get there. But I do think it's, it's important for us to lay that as a standard for all of our students. I think the next piece that is critical for our students to succeed, and I'm using the, the research that was on one of our very, the early slides tonight that talk about MasCor, but also talk about internships or job opportunities for students. And then talks about advanced coursework and, and even talks about attendance rates. And all of those are critical factors. And research has shown, and thank you for pointing that out in an early slide, research has shown that, you know, those are the key indicators that we have to follow. So on advanced coursework, you know, to me, there's three key components that were laid out today, advanced placement, IB and dual enrollment. On AP, superintendent, I think that's a chance in your reimagined work for us to think about how to increase access to AP for our students. So you may be a student at Fenway, but you may want to take an AP course at Boston Arts Academy or another school. And now through remote, you know, even using some of that technology in the future, can we, can we reimagine how we provide AP opportunities for our students that don't restrict them to the building that they're in? And I, I share your interest in IB. I'm a big fan of IB, my wife's family has experienced it overseas. I think we're struggling there. We are offering it, the number that was mentioned today was, I think, two hundred eighty-eight students. I think the number is quite low when we look at students who are actually graduating with an IB certificate. They may be taking some classes, but we're not there yet in the two schools that have been doing it for a while. So I struggle with whether it makes sense to expand that. Yet I do think we do have more opportunity with dual enrollment, with the amount of colleges that are around us, both, you know, the excellence at Funky Hill Community and Roxbury Community College, and UMass Boston that wants to help, and others. I think the opportunity to really get some traction on dual enrollment. The Wallace Grant, I know, is around in, in helping us pilot that. I, I think we have some real opportunity on dual enrollment. I would like to add to the equation, certification or certificates. There's a number of certifications or certificates our students could be getting that they can put immediately to work as well. In higher ed, you know, Dr. Coleman and others will tell us, a lot of the colleges are starting to think in terms of certification as well, step-by-step program. And I think we could, we could do some more work there. The last piece I want to address is about alternative ed. And Dr. Rivera, I, I, I share your concern about, is there gonna be an impact on dropout and graduation? I think so much work has been done around that. And I think the, the hard answer is, there is the potential to be an impact on the dropout rate. When we change and we raise our graduation requirements, of course, there's a potential for that, and we have to be honest and upfront about that. But I think the work that the superintendent's team laid out tonight, I think AIP is gonna be very helpful for, to retain students in the schools that they're in, those that were starting to go off base. And so thank you for Mr. Manning, who presented tonight about the work being done at Excel. I think we still need to have a strong, robust alt-ed program for students who do drop out or don't get a diploma or aren't, aren't able to succeed in the school that they're in. And I think that's another piece of the puzzle there. Because I think we do have to be honest that the potential is there for an impact short-term. But we can work with those students. And in the meantime, I think we're doing the right thing by raising the expectations for all our students while we work on. And I appreciate the superintendent talks about a multi-year program, that chart that showed us, it's a multi-year plan, and what's the work plan of how do we get there? How do we get the buy-in from school leaders? That this is the right thing to do, even as they know that it's gonna be a lot of work to get there. So I'm very encouraged by the presentation tonight. And this is really getting at the core issue that we have a responsibility for, which is student outcomes. And what is the policies that we need to have to help positively impact that? So very, very encouraging conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Dr. Rivera? Could I just respond really quick?
Oh, of course.
Two things, Mr. O'Neil, thank you for the thoughtful comments. First, we are planning on career technical education to be part of the high school redesign, especially at the middle grades. And so that there's strong pathways to a vocational credential at Madison Park or just job shadowing, career internships, apprenticeships, other things to really ramp up the current technical ed, grade seven through twelve. Secondly, so that is a big piece of the Core Four. Secondly, we also, you, you had a question about dropout rates going up and maybe graduation rates going down. And I think a bigger impact to that, rather than raising rigor, is the fact that MCAS test is changing. Actually, their cut score and their standards are changing. It was supposed to change this past year, but they've given us a little cushion with it. And maybe Ms. Hogan could just briefly, I know this meeting's getting long, but briefly speak to the MCAS cut score and how that's changing.
Yep, um, so you might remember, um, back in twenty seventeen, the grades three through eight MCAS transitioned from Park to what we call the next generation MCAS, which are higher standards focused, not just on preparing students for graduation, but preparing students for college and career. And so the three through eight MCAS did that transition earlier. And then actually in twenty nineteen was the first year that the tenth grade MCAS did transition to what we call that next generation. So it is computer-based, primarily online with the more rigorous standards. And right now, students have the opportunity to take the legacy MCAS through the retesting process. But we do expect that to get phased out as the next generation MCAS is sort of continued to be given in high school. And so we do see, we do see changes in the results there, and they are expected. Though they do align more to how the federal government sets the cut scores for the, the NAEP assessment, the National Assessment of Educational Progress. So essentially raising the bar on those test scores. They have sort of adjusted the cut scores for the competency determination to try to account for that change in standards that Dr. Cassellius is mentioning. But we do also expect that to sort of phase out over the years. And we're not sure yet what the impact of that will be on students passing the MCAS on their first attempt for graduation purposes.
Which is another reason that having the MasCor helps us to make sure that students are prepared for the level of rigor that's going to be on the exams, which right now, we're actually getting a little bit of a pass on because they've given us a little bit of cushion to phase in the cut score that they really want to phase in, that will be aligned to the NAEP test. And so if they continue to keep an exit exam here in Massachusetts, which many states have catapulted. But if they continue to keep an exit exam, our students will be held to a much higher standard than they ever have been held to before, and we have to make sure they're prepared.
Yeah, and, and with the, you know, as we talked about earlier tonight, with the increased federal funding under the relief, there's gonna be a lot of look at assessments and how we're tracking assessments to see if our students are recovering the learning law. There's going to be a lot of look at assessments and how we're tracking assessments to see if our students are recovering the learning loss. So yes, that will continue. Thank you for pointing that out, though. You're absolutely right. I had forgotten about the increase on two point oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera.
Yes, um, yeah, I just need to make a comment on this last point of why we do need to, you know, get rid of high stakes testing in our in our state and nationally. If we're trying to become anti-racist and these these standardized tests are are just promoting racism and systemic racism. And part of my question is about the advanced placements. It's a similar pattern that we saw with the advanced work classes. Where again, real significant disparities between Asian and white students. Eighty-six percent, seventy-eight percent enrolled in AP courses. So I'm just curious how the pre-AP is going to also be aligned to the work we're trying to do with excellence for all. And I'm wondering how how the school district is thinking about addressing those inequities. You know, earlier, right before we we get to the pre-AP. So is there a connection? My question is, is there a connection between the planning for excellence for all and the pre-AP courses?
Thank you. I see Ms. Zayas turned her camera on, so she may want to comment on the Excellence for All Initiative and its relationship to advanced coursework.
Thank you, Dr. Casselius and Dr. Rivera. Thank you for your question and for your earlier question as well. It's it's an exciting question. Frankly, we have an opportunity right now to ensure that all of our programming is vertically aligned. We've been doing that work internally. We have two working groups, one for kindergarten through sixth grade and one for seventh through twelfth grade. Where we're intentionally taking a look at and taking stock of all of the current programming. And what and designing based on research and based on what we know is working for our students in our schools. The types of programs that should be in place across the board. And then intentionally making those connections between our sixth and seventh grades. And as our schools reconfigure from nine twelve to seven twelve, ensuring that the the rigorous programming is in place at at those grades as well. Indeed, the EFA program prepares our students for that rigorous thinking for a high level of reading and writing, mathematics work and project-based learning that supports all of that. I'll also say that we're we're giving really careful thought to college career and life readiness as early as our UPK. So in our, I'll make the connection to the last time that we saw you and we brought forward our early literacy work. It's critically important that we're thinking very intentionally about what our young people are learning when they're three, four, five and seven years old. And how they're understanding how how the written word works. And then extending that understanding in developmentally appropriate ways across the years. Leading to advanced coursework in their elementary grades. And then obviously as they matriculate into secondary, into their secondary education. And some of the ways specifically that we're doing that right now is ensuring that our middle grades teachers have access to high-quality instructional materials to training and coaching that will then prepare them for that advanced coursework. In seventh grade, pre-algebra, in eighth grade, algebra, as we know that that is a gateway to being prepared for higher order mathematics in in high school.
Did you want to add anything, Dr. Rivera?
No, I just also need to comment that I, you know, I am a public school teacher. I am in a union. And I don't, I don't think that the unions are the problem. And, you know, so we're looking for blame and we really need to look at the structural inequalities. The legacy of this history in our school district and that it's it's a complicated issue. And it just, I'll do respect to our teachers and the hard work that they're doing.
Thank you. Mr. DiRusio.
Thank you. So to follow up superintendent with the graduation discussion. So you attributed, and I think Mr. O'Neil kind of touched on this, but you attributed part of the increase to the pandemic causing certain requirements to be relaxed. And you you recommend that relaxation going forward for the reasons you stated. My my concern was, when I first heard that, about the relaxation was, well, and of course, we have to do this because it's a pandemic. But are we sending out, I think we are, are we sending out that graduating class into the world with less than what they would have had otherwise? If we had, you know, the assessments that we use to help gauge where they are and to help guide, you know, where they should be. And I worry about, does it impact their early job or career? Does it impact post-secondary? The pandemic's probably going to, you know, when it wants it recedes, we'll go back to, you know, these requirements. So I just, just to clarify on that, that was that was my concern, that we're sending folks out. And I'm hoping that those Biden dollars can be used to to supplement even this graduating class going forward. Which I I think they're going to need to help. You know, we have to do what we had to do the past twelve months, but that's not, that we weren't giving them everything that we could have given them.
Yeah, so I I guess I would respectfully disagree that we sent them out unprepared. They had thirteen years with teachers who assessed their learning and worked with them. And they were able to, these students earned their competency determination and were able to show that through their course grades and through their coursework that was assessed by their teacher. I have a pretty strong philosophical belief that standardized tests given at one time and one point in time are not a good measure of a student's overall achievement. And I do believe that they are racist in nature, like Dr. Rivera said. And I think that they bias children. I actually, as you know, was Commissioner of Education. I saw how these tests were made. You know, if test questions were too easy and everybody got them right, those test questions were thrown out. So, you know, I think that there are different statistical measures that are used and how these tests are created. Then there, once they do these field studies with with the tests, they're given to panels who look at them. They look at the data by race and by gender and by disability and by economic disadvantage. And they look at the percentages of kids who got the test item right or the kids who didn't get the test item right. I think there needs to be a whole lesson that's given to the public about these standardized tests and what they do and do not do. And I do believe they do damage to children at age three, I mean, at grade three, when we tell them they're not proficient. And I don't think we do enough psychological tests. I, as Commissioner, spent time talking to folks in Washington. Asking, why is it we give these tests three through three through eight and give them again in high school? What's the evidence base for giving them every grade level? What's the evidence base for giving standardized tests? And I was literally told that there was none. I said, where is it after all these years, you know, to to show? We've been doing these standardized tests since No Child Left Behind in two thousand and one. And we still see gaps rising. So I think we should really spend our time looking at the kinds of things we did last year, which was lifting up children. Rallying behind them, making sure they were able to show their competence, working with our teachers around assessment tools that really look at what children no one can do. And then help us better understand how we're putting them out in the world and whether they're ready. Doing this mass core is part of that, trying to create a graduation standard that's competency-based. Now we need to align the measures that are appropriate. I would strongly say, and I believe that we sent kids out with a diploma and those who go out without a diploma are in much worse shape than if they had been denied the diploma simply because they couldn't sit for a test.
Appreciate that. Look, I I don't know about the ideology of what types of assessments are right or not. Just a pragmatist that we're trying to track, we're trying to have accountability. We need outcomes that, the outcomes that we're setting out and desiring. How do we get, how do we get from from where we're starting to where we want to go? And assessments are are part of that. But I know that there's a, you know, there's theories and and research and ideology on this other piece. I had one more, one more comment, just with respect to the the high school piece and the MYCAP program in particular, got me thinking. I I visited with the BSAC students over a month ago. And I see my, I see the light is blinking in my chair. Could I continue or should I wait or?
Oh, I think she froze too.
Okay, I'll keep going. That one of one of the BSAC students raised a really interesting point about whether or not they knew what they were getting into when they got into their high school. And a number of them went to like the Arts Academy, BLA, the 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 schools that have the admissions, different selective admissions. And she raised a great point that she said she had done advanced work class in four and five. It wasn't available in grade six. So when she arrived at her school in grade seven, she felt very unprepared and really struggled because of the homework. And she wished that she had known more about the ultimately the high school that she was going to. And maybe she would have made a different choice. And so one thing that I can just to suggest, you know, based off that insight is, how how do we use student voice to really drive the increase in standards across all of our high schools? And in particular, that we really do, you know, we really do encourage them to have a choice going into ninth grade. That really every school become, you know, have their own admissions policy that every kid has to apply to a ninth grade. And requiring the schools to to say, hey, this is, you know, this is the culture that you're going to get at our school. These are the choices you could have here. Everyone has that that baseline of mass core. But we, you know, we're going to do more art here, we're going to do more, you know, STEM here and so forth. And really bring in that component of student choice and student voice. And and the schools might get the feedback of, you know, hey, why are, why aren't a lot of, a lot of kids making us their number one choice? And then that may may cause them to, you know, add different offerings, change and so forth. So just to note on that, that I I thought it was a really interesting comment, you know, by our BSAC students. And a number of them, you know, shared similar stories. And just to introduce that student voice to improve high schools, I'll just put that out there to superintendent and the team. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiRusio. I think we absolutely need to do a better job of educating our students on the opportunities within our schools. I think having the mass core is one core foundation and framework, but then there are other schools like EMK, Madison Park. You know, that Boston Green Academy that have a special flair to their school or their culture. Different schools have clubs and debate clubs and other things going on. The students need to know that. But I, as your superintendent, I will never bring forward entrance criteria for high schools. Any kind of application, because anytime you put an application in front of a student to enter a high school, it becomes a barrier. However, I I do support marketing our schools and a common course catalog so that students absolutely know what they're getting into, so to speak, when they go to a school and what the support systems are there, what their curriculars are. But entrance criteria, I think, is dangerous ground to get into when we're trying to be an anti-racist district.
Thank you, Mr. Tran.
Thank you. Very quick, a quick comment. I believe that my last statement may have been misunderstood or may have caused some concern regarding the 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 issue that I raised regarding the union. What up? Okay. My record as a civil rights lawyer dealing with union issue, representing union employees in all phases of union as well as discrimination regarding employment speak for itself. And I'm proud to say that I'm 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 a very liberal guy when it comes to those kind of issues. I believe that we have what we have here. We have a common underlying goal. That is the best interest of the students, the best interest of the children. And I'm only speaking regarding the union to work with us mutually to advance the best interest of these students. While also concerning regarding the interest of the teachers. That's, that's all I was trying to raise. The 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 bottom line is the children. And if if there was misunderstood, if there was misunderstanding because of that, I will apologize. But again, I'm anti-racist and I and my 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 record on racism with my work on civil rights, my work on labor law, labor issues, labor relations speak for itself. So I apologize again. If there is a misunderstanding, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tran. Dr. Coleman?
Great, thank you. Great conversation. I'm looking forward to more conversations about the role of assessment, the high stakes testing and how we can use that process to both know what we're doing without necessarily creating barriers for kids. And I think that's something that if we want to either have the school quality task force take that discussion on in a more broad community base, I think that would be worthwhile for us of the next, not to, not, not, not in an emergency, but to really plan for how we want to think that through in the future. And then the other, the other piece in terms of the selection, helping people selection, I would want to put on the table. And I, and I think having a presentation on this in the next time we come around to talk about college career ready is core, as I understand, a core to MYCAP. It's one of the things that students have to do as part of MYCAP is articulate their interests and talents and and develop an individual learning plan. And that could be an avenue for helping them select the high school and next step that's appropriate for them. So by bringing a MYCAP into our middle, middle-aged years, we would facilitate this ability to make more informed and thoughtful high school selection. So I think that's that, that's an important issue. It's a problem as we've identified. And MYCAP, I think, will help us address that.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. And I second that on the MYCAP. And it's not just because Sociedad is working with BU on the middle school years, but it is true. And they need to start thinking about that much earlier and have, you know, that's how students get engaged and have, feel like they have control of, you know, where they're going and where they need to get to. So I'm speaking out of turn, sorry. But I just had to say, I agree. Any other school committee members that want another pass? I wanted to just say, thank you again to the heads of school from East Boston, Mr. Andrew Forte and Ms. Murphy from English High School and Dr. McCall and Andrew Manning from Excel High School. And I I go back a ways with Dr. McCall. And, you know, it's great to see you, even though it's it's here. I hope I get to see you face to face. But these, these school leaders, I think, represent, you know, exactly what we are trying to go and the direction we're trying to go. I loved hearing all of you in terms of the innovation, you know, that you are doing within your school. The relationship piece that you talked about is so important. I I completely agree. The way that you're engaging students, the creativity and the enrichment and the caring and then the working with partners. I just really take my hat off to you. And I look forward to, I think, one of the things that I'm that I felt much more comfortable in this conversation versus the last time that we talked about it is that we will have an implementation or a planning year, the year zero, to really plan because we want to make sure that all the school leaders are part of the conversation because they know better than we do. They are on the ground and they understand what's going to work, what is working and how we can all work together. So I appreciate that part of the plan and having, again, the voice. I also, you know, I'm very excited by this presentation because it is one of our, one of our goals. And I do agree with the Vice Chair. To me, it is, when we're talking about the different buckets and the overall piece, it does get to closing opportunity and achievement gaps and giving us a framework. And I think that's, it's really important to have a goal. And how you get there within your school, the creativity that you use, that's up to you. But if we have a framework and an understanding, I think that that's really, really important. There were a lot of things that I was excited about in this presentation in terms of the, but also mentioning the funding because I know that I heard that from school leaders is, you know, what is it going to take if I'm going to have this? I want to make sure that it's funded and also the flexibilities. And I do echo the Vice Chair's comment around Al Ted, you know, and also Dr. Rivera. It's, I would like to know more about in the, in the presentation, there was something around providing supports, for example, for English learners. So I'd like to understand, you know, what does that actually mean? What does that look like? But I think those things would be really important. I liked seeing the credits for language proficiency and ESL. I think those things are really, really important. You know, things like the bilingual financial aid advisors are pluses also. And the taking out of the no credit, I think, was really important again. For me, those are things that lead back to closing opportunity achievement gaps. SAT in the school day, awesome. Let's make it happen for every student. And MYCAP, I'm a huge fan of MYCAP, obviously working on it, but a huge fan. My, and then also, I do appreciate in the presentation that there was mention of Asian students. I think sometimes we forget that not all Asian students are doing well. And so I think digging deeper, and I appreciated seeing that in the presentation. My questions are, oh, sorry. And I do want to thank the central office staff. I didn't say that before, not just the school leaders, but for your presentation, I know you put a lot of work into it. And a special thanks to Andreas Zias, Chief Academic Officer and the academics team for putting this together. My, my comments, maybe not so much questions, but I think that what is also exciting about this is that I think Vice Chair mentioned it, that we can use this with the technology that we have kind of, you know, everybody's kind of gotten used to this year. Like, I can foresee that the campus without walls piece that we've been talking about would happen for every student. So they would have access. We wouldn't have to worry about students traveling. It can be a way to share staff, you know, defray some of the costs if students are getting online and are able to share, you know, be in a platform. I know that, that the district is working with Open Opportunities Massachusetts and doing the pilot on campus without walls and having, using Outschool as a platform and having classes. And I'm excited to see the results of that. And the other question I had and added for another, another time when we come back and talk about this, I would like to know what the other districts, because we heard some are using. I just would like to know what's the impact in those districts? And how has that gone for them in adopting mass core? And then my last two things are, I do appreciate the mention of working with external partners because I do think there are partners already who are doing things that fit into mass core for credit. So if I think of Hyde Square Task Force or Sociedad, where we provide credited arts program, or if I think of Hail, which is doing outside and science, so phys ed and science. If I look at college coaching in the West End House, if I look at internships that the PIC is doing, there's a lot of universe of partners that I think we can use within this mass core. And I do want us to focus on figuring out our relationships with higher ed. So really just more targeted, more conversations. I don't know if that's a working group or what that looks like, but I think we just, we need to, to be, I think, in a better relationship with them. And then the last thing I'll say, sorry to go on so long, is I think Mr. DeRouge kind of mentioned is, we have a set of students who some are going to be going into college, some are not. And so is there a way that we can work with our philanthropic partners, like, for example, Success Boston, to expand so that we can take these young people in in some of the Success Boston programs that provides coaching for two years, well, secondary coaching? Because it's, I think, more than ever important based on what happened this year and really just providing that support, that's, you know, next steps, that's academics, that's helping with, you know, financial aid, helping to to find advanced training or whatever. So I'd love to see that expanded. And I'm sorry for the long thing. I'm just personally excited by the presentation. So I really appreciate everybody having a little patience with me. So I don't know if you want to add anything, Dr. Casellius, as I close up this part?
I do. I just want to thank you for your comments and every, all the school committees' comments. It's been really good feedback. We can get the heat maps, we can get the data. We can also get some more information about assessments and the difference between formative interim accountability assessments, you know, which ones are diagnostic, which ones aren't, so that people can just have better understanding around that. Bring back some more information on our grading practices and our attendance practices as it relates to student outcomes. Also, we can look at SAT and ACT scores as a, as a comparable kind of standard that's going, that hasn't been changing. Like, the tests are changing, Mr. O'Neill. So we can look at all of those measures in college and career readiness. And then we'll come back around in probably mid-April toward the end of April and ask you to look at this with a work plan attached. I want to thank our secondary school superintendents, Dr. Brueggemann and Dr. McIntyre, who put together a lot of this presentation, have been shepherding this high school redesign with the school leaders. I want to thank the school leaders who are here today and those at home watching and those at home who maybe aren't watching because they're prepping for our high schoolers to be back next Monday. But I'm just so proud of them and their willingness to lean into this really tough work so that in Boston, we're not talking about three high schools. We're talking about all of our high schools being equitable and creating a great opportunity. So thanks again to the committee for your willingness to spend some time with us on this really important topic today.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Casellius. And thank you for thanking everybody because for us, we don't always know all the players. So thank you also to Dr. McIntyre and Dr. Brueggemann. And also Monica Hope, and who is, I've been in gazillion meetings with her. She knows her stuff. So anyway, thank you so much.
And there's a whole team behind the area superintendents, too. There's the secondary team, there's a whole team behind Andrea, there's a whole.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone. I can only say that in the goals and guardrails and putting all of that together, I got firsthand view of what it takes to put presentations together. And I have a whole new appreciation for all the staff that put those together. It is an enormous amount of work. So thank you. We are now going to, and thank you all the committee members for your really thoughtful comments and questions. It was really engaging, an interesting conversation. And I, I felt it feels really good to have this conversation after we had all those retreats and seeing as like how we're seeing the fruition of like tying that together. So thank you so much. We're now going to move on to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers for public comments on reports.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Sullivan. Is there any new business? Okay. So this concludes our business for this evening. The next school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, April 7th at 5:00 PM on Zoom. And if there is nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair O'Neill. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the rule?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, have a good evening, everybody.
Mr. DeRouge?
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, have a good night, everyone.
Mr. Tran?
Yes, and good night.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. See you next, the two weeks, whatever. Good night.
Night. It's going to be 70 tomorrow. Get outside.